Thank you for your patience.
Sure. Okay, we'll start again here. At this time and at each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside up to thirty minutes for residents, students, and employees to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Ms. Drake will have a timer on the screen. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. When you approach the mic, please state your name and your community, and we'd like to ask everyone to leave their mask on, please. Our first speaker is Angela Lambert. No Angela, okay. Our next speaker is Zoe Zimmerman. Zoe Zimmerman. All right. Our next speaker is Dan McCaggy.
Hey all, Dan McCag, Blacksburg, and a parent of a couple of elementary school students there. Thanks for the opportunity for public comment tonight, and I'll start with just a quick thank you. Appreciate your leadership as a board, the role of the superintendent here, and the challenge that you've got in front of you as you continue to lead during a pandemic. As a career public servant, don't, you know, I take that thank you very seriously, and it's not lightly that I come here with concerns. I'm here to talk about transparency. So, the challenge we've got in our school system right now is that we've fallen into a real trap of not sharing the best available information. And this health department has fallen into that same trap over the last year of deciding that it wasn't always in their best interest or their responsibility to share the best available information. Our students, particularly in the elementary school environment, unvaccinated, I think we can all agree that we do have transmission, that we do have exposure. Masks are our best possible mitigation, and that's great, I'm glad we're applying them. The reality is, is that we have unmoderated school buses, we have five-year-olds who, you know, do well to stand in line, much less wear their mask all day. So, we should be sharing along the lines of what the health district has preached all the way along in order to inform the best possible personal risk assessments. Right now, as parents, we can't make those personal risk assessments without the information that you all can provide. So, what I'm asking for is use the information that you have. Don't fall into the trap of feeling like your liability is increased based on withholding information when you think that there's no documented exposure. That's not in your best interest. It's creating a situation where parents are forced to rely on our social networks, on social media, and rumors. That's not what you all want. You want to lead in this space, you want to share more than the neighboring health districts, more than the neighboring school districts. Just don't fall into the trap of thinking that you have a legal requirement to share a certain amount of information and not go beyond that. We have situations like this week in an elementary school in Blacksburg where cases were reported. It took almost a week for parents to be notified in that classroom. Frankly, unacceptable, and we have to go to social media to try and figure that out. So, use your schools. This is a case where local is better. Our nurses have the capacity, the capability, the knowledge to share that information. The health district is trying to contain that or hang on to that responsibility, and frankly, this is a space where you can lead. So, appreciate your continued engagement here and for your consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Mitchell. No Jennifer Mitchell, okay. Our next speaker is an electronic one, Evan Lally. Hi, Evan Lally.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Please state your name and your community, and then your three minutes can start.
That's great, thank you. My name is Evan Lally. I'm a parent of a couple of children at an elementary school here in Blacksburg. Calling because I'm concerned about the potential for COVID to spread through the schools, and want to kind of piggyback on some of the comments that the man who was up earlier presented. I agree with what he said. Yesterday, we got an email identifying a classroom at one of the elementary schools in Blacksburg that said that all of the students in a single classroom should get tested for COVID, and that the health department was tracking cases. So, we think this is a good thing, but I do have two comments about it along the lines of improved communication. The first is a question. I would like to know if the health department or the school board have considered how to encourage voluntary testing in this kind of circumstances. I know there is some question about whether families would participate, or when would be the right time to do voluntary testing or at-home testing. From my perspective, our family would gladly participate if we knew it could help keep the school safe, and I know that there are other families out there in the community who feel the same way. The second comment is that for us, unfortunately, the notifications did not come soon enough. I would like to respectfully ask the health department and the school board to find a way to monitor and notify parents much faster so that they can do testing at home on their own, or take time off before their own kids get sick. It's so important for younger kids, especially in elementary school, who can't get vaccinated yet. We would like to ask that you reevaluate your communication protocol, and frankly, if it involves voluntary participation from the community, I think there's people out there who'd be willing to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Lenwood Hudson.
Hi y'all, I'm Lenwood Hudson from Blacksburg. I've got two daughters at Blacksburg High School. One plays volleyball and one's in marching band, and they're both back doing volleyball and marching band along with other sports and activities. It's great, we're super happy about that, I guess. But, that being said, we worry on a daily basis about what kind of exposure they may be getting, both in those activities and in other settings as well. We're not worried about them so much getting sick and going to hospital or whatever else because we're all vaccinated, but it's more about making sure that we can keep them in school and keep them doing those activities. We don't want them to, you know, if they had to quarantine for ten days, that would be a big portion of a sports season, or multiple band competitions, or missing class and missing that work. We have to make those decisions on a daily basis, and so what we really need is more information and transparency so we can help make those decisions more frequently. You know, how many kids and teachers are out sick and quarantined, all those things, because they factor into our decisions all the time. If we're going to attend an event, if we're going to carpool, right? A lot of these things, the transmissions maybe aren't happening in the school, but are happening outside, but that doesn't mean that they're not happening, right? And it's still a part of our daily lives as parents, we're still having to deal with those. I'm not even sure if teachers know when students are out sick or when they're going to be back. It feels like we should be able to share more of that information without sharing all the personal information. So, I haven't gotten one of these in a while, but I know back when kids went to elementary school, if there was lice in the classroom, right, we'd get those little notifications, there's lice. It didn't say who, but it at least told you as a parent, it's something you need to be aware of, right? So, you could take precautions, you can do all the things you need to do. If we can do it for lice and stomach flu and some of these other things, I don't know why we couldn't do it for COVID as well. I know other counties share information. I have a form from Chesterfield, which I've shared with some of you already, which, you know, if there's evidence in the classroom, they share that information. Doesn't mean your kid has COVID. It just gives the parents information so they can take precautions. They may change some of their decisions based on that knowledge, right? And I feel like, I feel like I'd like to see MCPS kind of treat us all as a school community across the whole county, and really kind of provide guidance and information awareness so we can all work together as a community to keep our kids safe in school and out of the school. The situation at CMS, it certainly wasn't isolated just at school, because those kids play on sports teams with other kids, and their parents maybe live in Christiansburg, but they work in Blacksburg, right? We're all one big community. I feel like MCPS could share more information so we could all be aware of how to keep our kids safe in school and out of school, and so we can all get through this thing together, because COVID's not going away anytime soon, right? That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Parissa Farhi.
Hello, I'm Parissa Farhi. I'm a parent of three children in the schools, one in middle school to an elementary school. I'm also a physician in town, where I have to work with many, many patients within six inches of their face daily, and honestly cannot afford to get COVID and transmit it to my patients. Many of them are not fully vaccinated or immunocompromised. I think the school board has done a very good job of being better than other authorities that we've been dealing with during this pandemic, and I want to thank you for that. I've said that repeatedly during the past year and a half, that our schools have been one of the best groups, our leaders have been one of the best in this pandemic. With that said, there are two areas that I have come across, actually, in addition to what the other two gentlemen have mentioned, that need to be addressed. One is that kids with COVID symptoms are allowed to come back to school, sit within three feet of another child without being tested. That happened to my son's best friend, who was a scientist, at three feet from him. He had all the symptoms, he went home for a day, he came back the next day and sat three feet next to him. A sign seating, no testing. I called the nurse. The nurse indicated that because he did not have a known exposure, he was not required to get a test. We all know that's ridiculous in a pandemic. So, I ask you to please require testing for people who have COVID symptoms before they come back to school. There are ten-dollar tests they can do on the spot. That's not much of expense to save another family's livelihood, family members, other people, our hospital system from being exposed to, or having the risk of being exposed to COVID. So, that's one thing. The next thing is gym. Gym is required, you cannot get out of it. The school board has decided to require students to change. In my son's middle school, about forty kids at a time go to the locker room and take their masks off, because you need that in order to change. It's a closed, low-ceilinged space, and there is no adult chaperones to control the children. When they go to the gym, they've only been outside once so far. And during that time, when they're indoors, they're allowed to take their masks off. Again, that's against the policy, but it's happening. So, those are some areas you guys could address to help. Our hospitals are almost full. If you get sick, you might not have a hospital room to go to, and you will become a victim of COVID, even though you did everything right. So, please address this, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, public address is closed. We will move on to our consent items. We have six out-of-state field trips and meeting minutes presented as consent items tonight. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I have a question. So, the Blacksburg High School--
Excuse me, Penny, could you, yeah, talk more into your mic? It's hard to hear.
The Blacksburg High School field trip to Texas, and it talks about the cost for the student. If a student can't afford to cover this cost, how is that being taken care of?
The school pays. That's with any activity like that. Yeah, no one will not be, no one will be allowed not to attend. Everyone will be able to attend regardless of the financial situation.
So, let me ask this question. When we have field trips, do all students and their families understand that this is something that the schools will take care of and doesn't hinder their participation?
We ask the schools to give that information, absolutely, and a lot of the documentation that's presented. Two parents will actually make statements in regards to that, if they need extra help or any assistance to contact the school.
Okay, thank you.
No other items to discuss?
I just have a question about the Auburn High School varsity basketball team. Going to Florida for three days at the very end of the semester. I'm assuming they're not going to miss exams or any end-of-semester items? I mean, it seems like timing isn't very good, and also, sixteen hundred dollars a person. Again, there's who's footing the bill for that, because that's a hefty--
Right.
--expense.
When I saw that expense, I actually called the principal to ask about that, and he says that there will be fundraising for that. And most all of that, really, when I call sixteen hundred dollars per student, it will be fundraised.
All of it's going to be fundraised?
That's the understanding, yeah.
What about the timing on it, though? Isn't that right at the end of the semester?
Yeah.
And these are high school students?
Yeah.
And we're okay with them missing the end of their semester?
What's the, how many days of school are they missing? I haven't, I don't remember.
Three or four days, I think it's a--
I think three nights, probably, let's see. I looked at the three school days.
I don't know, what are the dates?
Twelve--
The fifteenth through the nineteenth.
Yeah. Twelve, fifteen through twelve.
I believe that falls in the window, but we have the window that we intended to test, but the window is much larger than that, and we can make special accommodations.
It's not uncommon for students to miss school for that amount of time to go on field trips. It happens every year in our schools.
And if I may, that's no different than if a parent takes a student out for their own discretion, am I correct? I mean, that's--
Yes.
We--
Well, yeah, I realize that.
And I know most field trips do have lots of forms of fundraising, so I feel like they iron out those things before they would bring that to us. Am I correct by thinking that?
Yes, they have, yeah. They have, and they anticipate that the costs will be covered.
That's something that's been going on for a long time.
Yeah. Now, from my understanding, this isn't the first time that they've taken this trip, so.
Did anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, the items are now considered approved on consent. Payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
So, move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to take a quick break before we start into our business meeting so that we can get Ms. Whitaker on the phone. You're welcome to come back in five minutes, if you'd like to stretch your legs or go to the restroom.
We haven't been here for thirty-six minutes.
Well, we just have to get her connected, so.
I don't need stretching yet, Marty. I need stretching here.
...our business meeting, we're gonna first talk about my grant proposal.
Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, the grant proposal, IT course pathways. This is year two of this grant. The grant focuses on cybersecurity and computer science coursework. Does anyone wish to make a motion related to this grant proposal?
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The next grant proposal is for Chromebooks for grades one through three. This grant would fund the purchase of Chromebooks for grades one through three. This grant is funded by the American Rescue Plan but is separate from our CARES funding. Does anyone wish to make a motion related to this grant proposal?
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question on this, is, this is not, um, and I'm in favor of this, obviously, uh, from reading the thing at the bottom, this is, these will be Chromebooks that will kind of be distributed kind of among those grades and in libraries and things like that. This is not gonna be the same as what we're doing with third through, through twelve, correct?
No, actually, it will be the same thing that we're doing for, our, our plan initially was for four twelve. Then when the pandemic hit, we rolled K through twelve.
Okay.
So we've picked up K, but we have a gap of one, two, and three.
Okay.
Cause we already have four and five that we purchased ahead. So the devices that one, two, and three have are going to stop getting updates from Google. So this is from the federal government. It's called the Emergency Connectivity Fund.
Okay.
And so Tommy and I talked about it and we felt that we would be able to get these devices. So it pays a hundred percent of the devices. There's nothing from, other than some licensing that we have for these devices. So they will be assigned, they have to be assigned to students according to the grant.
Okay. And there, did they have to be K, or one, two, and three?
That'd be one, two, and three because we have to say that the devices that we are purchasing do not meet specifications to do remote test or learning.
Okay.
All of our other devices, we, we could not say that in good faith, but we can for these because they're hammy downs.
And, and where I'm kinda going with this too, just trying to understand the long-term strategy. I mean, certainly in the near term, I mean, we'd, we'd like to think, you know, we keep thinking we're out of this and then we're not, right? So obviously, this is a, a very good thing, I think, to have right now. In the past, we've had parents and even educators who have raised questions about, you know, how much screen time even on school Chromebooks do we want to, you know, younger, younger kids, you know, K through, through three to, to really experience? And so is that, how's that being handled? Is this something that, do we, I guess, number one, does, is this intended to, to be our policy, I guess, moving forward? That, that every child from, from K through twelve will just have their own Chromebook? Or is that something we may reassess, uh, when we're out of the pandemic, or why?
We'll continue to reassess it, and here's why. We, technically, we have never gotten the Chromebooks into our budget. Every year, it's been end-of-year funding. So it's really not a budgeted item. It's amazing how we've continued to do this year after year after year. So it's never really gotten into the budget. It gets cut every year. And so it's just one of those, we just, we just go year by year and, and, and hopefully, we can make things work. And so far, our technology department's done a tremendous job in, in actually doing that. So, and now, instructionally, what you had asked is we, um, where is Mrs., uh, Dr. Wickham? What's, what, explain the type of, um, you know, when it comes to screen time and what goes on in classrooms and, and sharing the board that they're not on their screen all day long.
Absolutely, and certainly, we do not want children on their screens all day long. And the way this works in the worst-case scenario, let's say we have to be, let's say we had to be all virtual and on our Chromebooks. We've still encouraged our teachers to make sure that children have natural breaks. So it's the idea of twenty minutes of whole-group instruction, I'm on my screen. Then a little group may work with the teacher while the other children are completing work off of the screen, or certainly not synchronously. So just the way that we're set up naturally in elementary lends itself not to be on the screen. And obviously, it's not age-appropriate. You know, little children are learning how to hold pencils and markers and how to write. So there are just some things that don't work on a screen.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Policy five dash seven dot five. This policy was brought to us at our last meeting for a first reading. The FMLA adjustment is required by federal law. We cannot mandate that an employee exhaust all of their sick leave while they are on short-term disability. The second adjustment is brought forward for consideration. For funeral leave is adjusted, is, is changed to bereavement leave, and pregnancy loss is added as a reason to utilize bereavement leave. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding the updates to policy five dash seven dot five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Since this is a policy, roll call please, Ms. Morgan? I was gonna call you Ms. Not, but that's not right. Ms. Woods.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Travaca?
Yes.
Ms. Brentwood?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Perron?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Brink?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, we will have our update on the Christiansburg High School construction. This is very exciting. Our strategic plan update for this month is in the area of learning environments. Mr. Krantz is here to present an update on the design work related to Christiansburg High School. Mr. Krantz?
Yes, ma'am, good evening. Um, so where we're at right now, we've had meetings with school district administration. We've had meetings with our school leadership. We've met with the school's teaching staff. And we refer to most of that, that team as what they call the core committee. And we've had numerous meetings with that core committee. The whole purpose of pulling everything together was to identify the needs and wants that the school teams wanted. No regard to budget, no regard to the site, no regard to building code, just what was it that the school was looking to have in their building? From that, it develops into a schematic scheme, and we're near that phase as we speak. With the, with the development of the schematic scheme, we're in a position that we're able to do a really top-line budget today. It's not a detail. It's not one that shows every single line item because it's at a, you know, forty thousand-foot level. But it's fairly accurate and gives us a pretty good indication of where we stand with regard to where we may wanna be going to. So you'll see, this is the first floor. And I'll show you some additions here soon. But a new front, one of the goals that we had on this school is when you come in off of Franklin on Independence, today, you just kinda see a building. You don't really see a school. We wanna identify this as a school. We want that to be a wow factor that takes place. You'll see new classroom additions here to take care of the growth that's projected to take place in that school. The movement of the administrative office. And then we'll be putting over here the, the new cafeteria, kitchen, and all those areas. On the second floor, you start seeing the new, you know, all of our high schools have two gyms. Uh, this'll give Christiansburg High School their second gym. The exciting thing about this is the intent to bring in the indoor track. That is something that you see, all of our track programs here are very competitive. And this'll give them the opportunity to train year-round and compete on a year-round basis. You see some expansion over into the CTE area. We've heard, uh, the requests there. And then the top-level floor additions that we saw on the front of the building. Give you an idea of what it kind of would look like from a front. This is, you can see, coming in off of Independence, the front of the school. You'd obviously have the Core Cadet Building sitting over here that'll be fit into the campus. This'll become one huge campus area. Uh, this is just giving you kind of a starting point of what we're planning to. If I come from another angle, so you'd have behind yourself Franklin with Independence down here. Independence. Down this way, you get another look at what it is. Glass, lots of natural light, which is what, one of the second ambition and goal was. Bring the outside into the inside of the school. A different close-up look from what the front of the school will actually propose to look like. Again, you see the continuation of the glass, lots of natural open space. A side view of that front area. So again, your front entry doorway here. Again, lots of, you know, glass, open space with the intention of getting as much sunlight as we possibly can into the space. Where we estimate our current costs are as follows. The total square footage of the building is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet. Our estimated cost today is one hundred and ten point six million dollars. That's three hundred and sixty-six dollars per square foot. Um, the capacity for the building is currently projected to be sixteen hundred students. The goal is to always have capacity in your buildings. Too often, schools are built for what capacity is today, and then all of a sudden, two years, three years from now, you're putting mobile units in there, which makes zero sense. So we believe eighty-five percent is a very good standard to kinda cap your enrollment at. So you build for sixteen, but you hope you'll be at about a fourteen fifty to fifteen hundred number, which gives you then the freedom as your population goes up and down. And what your academic needs of your building are, you can change accordingly. If you build it and you fill up every room exactly, and there is no free space, when the academic programs change, you don't have that ability to change with it. Or you're trying to, to change a, a round circle into a square, and it's just difficult to do. So this gives you then the freedom as, as a school district to meet whatever the needs may be going forward. The next step with the county is follow-up with the county administration. They're having discussions with Davenport. They are trying to determine exactly what debt, what debt level they are comfortable with under today's economic environment. Um, that, that's changing, obviously, um, almost every day. And they, Craig and Angie Hill, we're gonna have conversations with Davenport to see where that number may be cause it's, they believe it's changed. Um, we believe that those discussions that the county's having could result in a higher level of debt that they're comfortable in issuing. Um, they've not shared a certain debt level yet because they haven't had their conversations with Davenport. But it's my understanding those discussions may have been held last week or, or actually be discussing this week. It's fairly soon. We just haven't heard the exact date. Uh, we propose that there's a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors for y'all to have joint discussions about the status of the project, the cost of the project, and where we go to with next steps. The Board of Supervisors is available to meet on either October fourth or October nineteenth. Um, we will continue to work with both the county and Crabtree to determine if we can kinda phase in the project. The, the county has debt that will retire going out into twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And say we can do ninety percent of the project prior to that date, and the ten percent is ten million dollars for the sake of discussion. If we can get the extra ten million in that twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe, then maybe we can make the project work. So we're looking at any and all possibilities. And you'll see in the discussion with, uh, uh, on the CARES Act money, an, an interesting idea there on how to make this work, even utilizing those funds to maybe kick this thing going. The next state, step with the state, if approved by you as a school board, under the CARES Act side, request approval from the state to use ten million dollars of the American Rescue Plan Fund for the HVAC, HVAC system, which is part of the addition and renovation project. Um, this is allowable under the American Rescue Plan side. Those funds would have to be spent and used by June of twenty twenty-four. So, um, if that's the will of the board, um, having the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors is critical. Getting that kicked off so that we can continue with our design work, get through construction documents, I can start working with the applicable regulatory bodies to get the permits necessary to get the work going. Using some different dollar amounts, if we did that, uh, you know, a hundred and ten million, we use ten million of American Rescue. Obviously, that would lower the total cost by a hundred million dollars, to a hundred million dollars. I wish it was by a hundred. So any questions?
On the, um, on that cost estimate, the three hundred dollars a square foot, how does that compare? I mean, what's, what's new, is that like a, that feels like a new construction price to me?
Well, what we've done under the schematic is we take the various stages of the building. So where we do the addition, we look at new construction cost. Where we look at light renovation, we use a low, significantly lower number. If we look at medium renovation, we look at another number, and if we go to high. Give you an example, there's an area of the building, I'm not gonna disclose it publicly because it's still a work in process. So to say anything's etched in stone is just not. But there's one part of the area of the building that we right now price it out with a high renovation area, okay? If that work got lowered from a high renovation to a medium renovation, we would save six million dollars. Right now. Just by lowering the type of renovation work that we do inside the space. Still meeting the needs, but changing exactly all the work. I mean, if you go look at CES and CPS, the renovations that's been done in those buildings are not all the same. If you go into the annex, for example, at CES, you see a complete renovation. If you go into, uh, the main building part of CES, you will, you'll see what's called, I would call, light renovation area. If you go into CPS next summer, you'll see that whole inside's a complete major renovation. We've taken everything out of it and redone it. So it's just the level of work that we can do, and there's lots of ways for us to accomplish the goals. It's just we're not at that step yet on what we can and can't do at this point. The other thing in there is we've got a contingency. Um, you will see from schematic design, from schematic drawings to construction drawings to the final permit, your contingency's gonna go down significantly. For example, CPS, CES, and VES, our contingency was running about fifteen percent when we started the process. When we actually got the GMP and started construction, our contingency was two point five percent, which is in line with where you'd expect at that time. But you need that room as you develop your cost because if not, you may, I may come to you and say it's ninety million dollars when actually it's a hundred and ten. You don't want me to do that. I'd rather be a little bit on the high side than the, until we start getting with the regulators and we start meeting through the building permit process, things can change. I mean, that building out there, that garage, it's changed three times since we pulled the permits. And hopefully, it doesn't change anymore. You know, it's changed during the construction process.
Um, so could you go back to the slide about our joint session? We need to come to a consensus on that so that we can put that on the Board of Supervisors' calendar as well as ours.
There it is.
So I'd like to just go around the room and see whether one or the other or both would work for the majority of us?
October four is Monday night, and October nineteen is Tuesday night.
Right, that's, that's our normal work session night. So...
So the nineteenth will work better for me, but if the majority is the fourth, I can make that happen.
Okay, Dana?
I could actually do either. I think it would be more accommodating to do it on the nineteenth just because that's when our regular meetings are.
Okay.
And if I may ask, will this be like just an additional meeting to our regular meeting? Or will it be like a mixed, mixed meeting?
What do we have, like, on the nineteenth agenda? Is it pretty full?
Right now, we're okay. It is a work session, so if you wanted to set aside time after the joint meeting to finish the work of the school board,
I just didn't know how the meeting, the, the joint part was gonna mix in with our regular business meeting.
We could do both, the possibility's there.
Right now, I don't think we have anything that's pressing that will be coming to you on that night.
I'm, I'm good with the nineteenth then, that's perfect.
Sue?
Either one's fine.
Mark?
I think either one is fine, maybe a slight preference to the nineteenth, but...
A slight preference?
A slight preference to the nineteenth, but I think either would work.
I like the nineteenth idea.
Okay.
Either one, either one.
And I'm either one, so why don't we just go with the nineteenth? That seems like the most popular?
Yeah.
You could, uh, update the Board of Supervisors? Hey, thank you, guys.
Seven o'clock for start time?
Uh, seven o'clock for our start time. And dinner at six thirty?
Here.
Do we want to eat at that meeting?
Meet here.
Oh, true. We probably shouldn't. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And do it here?
Yeah, that's...
Okay?
Yeah. October nineteenth, that's seven. Thanks, folks. Alright, thank you, Tommy.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Tommy before we move on to the next item?
So, in, in keeping with that same discussion, Tommy, so what you're saying, cause in your first slide, you basically said you kinda went to these teams and this was kind of a wish list, right? Give me everything you guys want. Are you saying that what, the schematic plan that you're showing us here kind of is the, this is what everybody wants kind of a thing, right? Yes, sir. And so, so that hundred and ten number is expected, I guess, to be a, a ceiling number, or? Is that, is that too, too much of a jump that I'm making there?
Um, how do I state this?
Well, I mean, you know, construction costs keep changing too, right?
I would think that right now, the hundred and ten million, we're at a ceiling. Okay? I think that as we go through the, the final design, as we tweak things, as we continue to meet with both you as a board, the superintendent, the, the administration leadership team, the school leadership team, and, and all the people in the school, I think we'll find things that we can do some value engineering, accomplish the goals that everybody wants with maybe in a different methodology than what we did. So I think what you're seeing at the hundred and ten is a cap. Now, let me tell you, there is a downside. The downside is, is that if we wait a year just on this project, and the hundred and ten's reasonable, at a five percent inflation rate, that would add almost six million dollars to this project. And then every year thereafter, it's not just six million, it's a compounding effect that takes place. So, you know, if we're in the ballpark, if we're doing the things that, that you as a board expect us to do, then I would encourage that the Board of Supervisors meeting for a discussion to get the A and E fees funded by the county so that we continue with the construction drawings and get those done as quickly as we can. Refine it, tweak it, continue to meet with all the parties that are there, and get to a number that we can come back to you and say, here's what the final cost, you know, the actual cost will be is X.
What, what goal date would you like for that?
Honestly, the sooner I, I mean, right now, if I could get it tomorrow, we would start, honestly, design work tomorrow. You know, our construction drawing tomorrow. So as soon as possible. I've shared the number with Angie Hill, so she's aware of what our, from my side, not, not Dr. Meyer, not the school board, but what I believe is the next step, and is that the county to fund that?
Okay.
And basically, we, you know, to, to, to do what we wanna do, we need to be moving dirt next summer.
Oh, yes, sir, without doubt. Yes, sir, good point.
I mean, we gotta be moving dirt next summer, which means all that preliminary work needs to, needs to get done and, um, and start moving on that. And another...
Excuse me.
In, in the initial conversations, the ninety to a hundred thousand, million, sorry, were the numbers that were being talked about.
Right, sure.
So this is not outside of the range. And if we're able to use ten million of our, um, American rescue, rescue funds to help, help offset that, that would be huge. And it would also be, uh, savings in what could happen with future construction because those funds would be saved and not have to be borrowed by the county.
Well, well, and also, if I may, when we did the Blacksburg and Auburn project, construction was at an all-time low, and it was a, a great time to build. That's not the case now. So even though that number sounds like, oh, my gosh, that's so much more, it's apples and oranges. It's a completely different ballgame because we're not in a, if I'm correct by saying that.
Yeah.
It was a major different occasion financially.
It's totally different today.
Yes, it is.
I mean, we just, we were just notified today that the generators on the new schools, we've been delayed. So, um, you know, and it's because of chips for the generators. And that's something we see every day, we're getting different product that's being increased or delayed. So you're right, Ms. Vaughn, it's a totally different environment today than what any of us have ever seen, I know in my career.
Any other?
Yeah, and, and for me, it's just, it's, it's a, it's an issue of expectation. When, when you threw out the seventy, eighty million-dollar number initially, I, I mean, I knew that that would go up just based on time, right? And then on top of that, as you pointed out, you know, construction costs have certainly risen quite a bit. So, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to keep an eye on the, on the big picture too and, and, and just see, because we've got a bunch of other projects that are also, that we, that we also need to do. So I'm just trying to, um, to figure that part out too, so...
Yeah, I think that's the exact way to do it. That's how I'm looking at it.
And that's what I was saying, that ten million would offset some of the debt that the county would have to come up with in, with future capital projects.
Alright, anybody else? Okay. Our next item on the agenda, um, is the CRSSA application. The CRSSA application is our submission to the federal government regarding how we will spend our CARES Act funding. We reviewed some of the information on July fifteenth. The funds have to be spent, as Mr., as Mr. Krantz said before, by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Twenty percent must be spent on learning loss. There are guidelines requiring, regarding how the money can be sent, spent. Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Krantz are, are here to provide...
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
We have, one, we have folks who are here that aren't wearing their masks. They need to put those on. And we are still in our meeting, so they need to lower their voices or take their discussions outside.
We, we've asked them to put them on.
Well, some of them have not put them on.
Thank you. Are we all good?
Yeah, we're good now.
Okay. Ms. Whitaker and Mr. Krantz are here to provide an update on the input, um, process for MCPS.
Annie, you want me to take the first slide?
Is Annie here?
Yes, she's on the phone.
I'm here.
Okay, hi, Annie. Okay.
Alright, well...
Hello?
Hey, Annie. So you can see the process, and Annie's done a tremendous job and her team in getting input because under... because under the American Rescue Plan, one big consideration there was get stakeholder input. Well, there's during the SOR 1, 2, and 3 phases, it's more about just getting out there and getting things done. So you can see on this timeline that in May, the administration provided the school board with an overview of the allowable use of funds, the summer program, and the next steps for getting school level feedback. In June, the school leadership teams met to identify their needs in order to provide the recommendations to you. July, elementary and secondary principals created a streamlined list of requests, and you'll see some numbers on that in a second. And then in August, the principals reviewed their final staffing request and we made the revisions to the plan. From a financial standpoint, and I'm only showing you the CARES Act funding that we have dollars left. So SOR 2, we started with 6.047 million. We've expended 2.364 million, giving us an available balance there of 3.682. PPE, we're tentatively setting aside $974,000 for PPEs, which would still leave available funds there of $2.7 million. The American Rescue Plan, which is estimated, because they still, the state still has not published their final, final numbers, is 13.581 million. We proposed using 1,650,000 for learning loss, mental health positions, summer school for three years, which there's a requirement in the American Rescue Plan, which is the first time this was done in these programs, that 20% of the funds have to be used for learning loss. And the summer school program qualifies for that meet. Chromebooks, this would be for two years of, to address your concerns, Mr. Shabaka, about sustainability in units, this would be two grades for two years, so four total grades over the course of two years, and that meets the funding. And then the additional funding that the governor's going to be releasing, we would be receiving 1,954,000. Those funds are intended to be used for ventilation-related projects. Under that funding, we have to meet 100% match in order to get those funds.
Oh.
SOR 2 and/or SOR 3 funds can be used as the match. That is specifically stated in their FAQ. So you'll notice on here that under the American Rescue Plan, the expiration date is June of '24. Under the governor's funds, we can go out to December 31 of 2026. There is, as I've learned from many state legislators and DOE has told us, do not anticipate that they will change our due date of June 30th of '24 to the 26th. That's not going to happen. The governor, though, through what the federal government did, laid it out in a longer period of time for the locality. So you can see the total available of all of those was 21.5 million. We've expanded 8.6 million of those funds, leaving us at 12.385 million today. You've got here, we proposed ventilation at CHS of $10 million. School requested funding positions of $2.94 million. And if I add the 2.7 plus the 82 plus the 1.9, I come back to the 12.94 million. And that's what we, from a pure financial standpoint, and in order to maximize the programs at CHS and to put some dollars into the CHS project, clearly, the American Rescue Plan funds for ventilation and the governor's funds would meet that. The only thing we, well, I say, one major thing we would have to do is get state approval. The state has said their biggest concern is school districts being able to prove that we can spend the funds by the deadline. And I think we can clearly do that, as Dr. Meyer said, if we can turn dirt this summer.
Yeah, you know, and, and one problem the other school divisions are having is we were already in the process of planning CHS. You know, we're several months ahead of the game. Well, most school divisions cannot start that process now and get to where they need to in order to spend that money. So since we already had a project that we're working on, it actually is timed out real well.
But they can also, just like us, let's say we didn't have CHS going, we could spend that on some of our other HVAC systems that are older, you know, like a Kips.
HVAC systems and roofs.
Right.
And how Kips, speaking of Kips.
We're doing the roof of Kips.
We're doing the roof of Kips now, anyway, yeah.
Using a silicone-based project we're pretty excited about. We'll be doing that during the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
And it's a product that we can install while school's in session and not impact us too.
So we're getting Kips done.
Awesome.
So.
What about their HVAC? Just on a side note.
At, at this point, we're finalizing our facilities plan so that we can come to the superintendent and to y'all as a school board. Our needs are greater than the dollars that are available.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, you know, y'all have to make, we'll give you our best guidance and recommendations, but it, it's some difficult choices that'll have to be made which directions to go.
Now, Annie will explain more of this as we move through this presentation, but generally, if you look at this, we're, we're looking at 14 positions, which is a total of basically a million dollars a year.
Right.
Okay? So in three years, we would have to come up with that million dollars to keep those positions. So ideally, moving forward, you know, the, the thought of us in, in one fiscal year saying, okay, we have that million extra, that's taking a big chance. What we would like to do over the next three years is to, is to take a little out of, out of time out of the budget. You know, of course, ideal, if you split it out, it'd be 400,000 a year, to actually make up for the, it would actually be 1.2 million, okay? In total, because we already have the four learning loss positions up at the top. So, uh, so we wouldn't have to get it all at one year. If we were able to get a little bit every year to put towards these positions, then at the end of the three years, we will actually have some additional money that we can put towards some of these projects as well, where we would have to spend it or lose it type of thing right at the end. So that's, that's ideal. But of course, as you know, the, the budgets are unknown. You know, we, we do not know until the Board of Supervisors tells us how much we're going to be given. We'll, we'll be requesting that, so. So Annie, do you want to go to the next and sort of explain how we're getting to these 14 positions?
Absolutely. And I can see, there we go, I can see that we're on the, okay, great. So the considerations, when we were looking through the requests from the schools and determining what to bring to the board today, we wanted to consider, you know, the pros and cons of different opportunities that were, you know, available through this funding. So we see the pros as a variety of things. First being, if we selected the use of those 14 positions, you'll see on the next slide how we would allocate them, but what it would do is give schools the ability to prioritize the hiring for positions that will have the biggest impact on their students. So principals would get to pick, you know, which position in their particular school they would like to have. We feel like those additional staff members would be able to help address learning loss for students. And at the same time, we feel like upgrading the HVAC at CHS will enhance the airflow and energy efficiency there and help to provide additional funding needed for the renovation. Utilizing the funding for the 14 positions and the HVAC would result in both the additional support for students and the new HVAC system for students and teachers at CHS. Dr. Meyer mentioned before, you know, funding and being able to maintain those positions. So with 14 positions, we do feel that we would be able to maintain those after the funding would be gone in three years by picking those positions up over time. While we did have a final request of 42.5 positions, it would be extremely difficult to be able to main those, maintain those after the time that the funding was gone. One thing that we did see, and we saw a couple of cons as well, is one might, might still be, even with a minimal number of positions with those 14 positions, we, we could see that schools may not be able to get all of the additional positions hired for this year. We're in the middle of the year and so it may be that some of the positions that they're seeking with the current shortage, we may not be able to find someone right now who could get released from a contract, but they may be able to find someone for next year. Um, and so that, you know, that would be one thing that we would be looking at is whether or not we'd be able to hire for now or if we would wait for next year with those. You can go ahead and click on the next slide. Um, so our proposed next step would be upon, you know, the board telling us to move forward, be to allocate the funding for staffing on a per pupil basis. We felt that this was the most appropriate way and that we would provide the funding for an equivalent of one certified position per 600 students. And so what we'd like to do is provide principals the opportunity to meet with their school leadership teams to identify how they would like to use the funding in their school. So I'm sure you can tell with, uh, you know, one position per 600 students, that may mean that every school might not get a full position. But what principals could do is work together to see if they wanted to hire the same position. For example, if two schools wanted to hire a school counselor, they could go together on that. And then there I have some examples for you in terms of how one school might break down a certified position. So we're saying here, funding equivalent to one position. That could be one full-time certified position, such as the school counselor, or that school may choose to hire two classified positions, such as instructional aids. Then we'd like to inform the board of the identified positions, which the schools have selected, so that we can let you know that at the September 17th meeting and then begin the hiring process for those positions.
17th is a party.
Are you there? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm trying. It's not moving.
Okay, great.
Is the next meeting the 17th?
No, it's the 21st.
Huh?
No, the 21st.
That's the last slide, Tom. No, is that, is that it? No, the question was, the next meeting is not the 17th?
No, it's the 21st.
It's 21st. So it was, the 21st is when we'd bring it back. Apologize for that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing if I, if that was a question for me.
Um, it's okay, Annie. We just, there was a discrepancy on the slide. It says September 17th for the board meeting. It's actually the 21st.
I apologize.
No, no problem. We fixed it. Well, we figured it out, that is.
Yeah, according to Brenda, that, that is the last slot, correct?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right.
Does anybody have any questions?
So this is a summary of all of our funding sources for COVID money, essentially, is it not, Tommy?
Yes, sir.
Um, so if we spend, you know, if we spend the 10 million on the ventilation for CHS and the 2.9 for the requested school positions, I guess where's the, where's the cushion for, for any future COVID-related things that may come up? And, you know, I, I know you're probably overstating the PPE, maybe it sounded like. You're, you're, you're putting a little extra money there. But I guess, you know, my concern right now is just that this, you know, we, we keep willing this thing to be over and it keeps rearing its ugly head and, in ways that we don't expect. And I keep thinking of, of new ways that, you know, hey, it'd be nice if we had a few hundred thousand dollars to do this or a million dollars to do that. And so, you know, my hesitation on, on any of these plans, well, I have two hesitations. I, I had a, I had a hesitation that I've brought up many times with the board about spending what I call now three-time money or two-time money, you know, for something that we may need long-term. But I had a good talk with Dr. Meyer about that. I think, I feel pretty good about the 2, the 2.9 million. It's essentially one, less than 1 million a year. And I, I feel okay about that and I do think that we need a lot of those positions to help the schools and to have, you know, and to basically play catch-up on the things that, you know, that, that we need to with COVID. I, I do think it, the schools, and we talked about this, so that the schools should certainly prioritize the positions that will help them catch kids up and, and that if that money is not there in three years and those positions go away, that, you know, it's not catastrophic for those schools. But I, I am still a little bit hung up on, on not leaving ourselves any additional money. I mean, we're, we're pretty early in the school year and to basically have all the money spoken for makes me nervous, I guess.
Well, you know, one thing you need to know about this too is, um, of course, the positions, once we hire them, they're, they're in. So we will probably not hire until next year because the, the folks are just not available. So that is a big savings for this year, okay? That will have, that will actually end up with, with some extra funds. Um, things such as Chromebooks, I know Doug didn't want me to say this, but every, we, the, the Chromebooks have never been in the budget and we're like, okay, this is a great time to, to know we've got what we need. Every year, we've, the first priority usually for in-year money has been to buy Chromebooks. So we anticipate having that year-end money again. And so we could, um, you know, what we would plan on doing is, is periodically coming back to the board and giving you the, all right, this is what's really happening. Here's how much we've really spent on this. Um, right now, some of this is just a guess. Uh, we anticipate, we will have funds left over from these um, as, as we move forward. Um, you know, there are so many variables that, that could, could change the current scenario. So, um, you know, we, pretty much we have to send something in to, to the government. This is part of what we have to send in as to what we're going to do.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and, but there.
And we can update that. We can send an amendment and it's a very simple process to send an amendment. So if we need to do that, um, it, it's not a challenge.
When would we actually spend the, the 10 mil, the 10 million for the ventilation? Is that American Rescue money?
It's a combination of the governor's 1.9 and then the difference is ARP fund.
So, so that just needs to be spent by June of 2024?
Correct.
Okay. So that also gives, does, let me ask you this. Does, does that give us some leeway? In other words, we're going to set aside 10 million, but let's say we have another need for one or $2 million down the, down the road this year that, that we need.
You could.
Can we come back and say, okay, never mind, we're going to do 8 million on the ventilation and we're going to do 2 million on this other thing?
You could do, you could do that, or as Dr. Meyer says, you end up, all those numbers there are going to change a little bit.
Okay.
Um, that you could reshuffle the deck, as I call it.
Okay.
Um, and I think still meet all of the objectives you're trying to, but give you as a board and Dr. Meyer as a superintendent the flexibility that if this thing, whatever direction it may go, that you have dollars available, that you could redirect into another direction with no problem.
Okay.
I don't think you'd have any problems doing that.
So you're, you're saying there are other resources other than pulling out funds from that 10 million?
You've got funds that are on there, for example, the Chromebooks, you know, if you're using, just like, that's two years, so that's 700,000 for years. So that's going to be FY '23 and FY '24. If things change this year or you saw that, um, you know, the Chromebooks are lasting a little bit longer, you could free up dollars in that. You see what I'm saying there? Um, summer school, you know, that was an estimate that we did. It's a pretty solid estimate. But as we reconciled to what our actual costs were this summer, I'd venture to say we're on the high side. I'd, I'd rather be high on my expenses and, and lower on my revenue. Those will free up some dollars. As Dr. Meyer said, the school requested positions, there's 980,000 there per year for, for three years. If you save half of it this year and only hire seven, which would probably be a fairly reasonable guess, that's 500,000 that is free just this year. You, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I just, for me, it's more of an issue of flexib, I understand the need to budget. Um, and, and I'm not trying to take anything away from one light item versus another. I just want to make sure that we've got room in this.
I, I think.
To react to things that come up.
I, I believe you clearly have that ability. If I didn't think that, I'd be telling that to Dr. Meyer and to you that, you know, it's too tight. But I clearly think you have the flexibility to meet. We can do the ventilation at CHS. We can get that project up and running and still have the dollars to meet whatever PP, you know, whatever needs we may have related to this COVID event.
Uh, you know, this should definitely be a part of, you know, we'll, we'll do a regular budget process, but we need to continue to update the board on where we are and how much we're spending and how many we're hiring and that kind of thing um, as we, as we're moving forward, uh, the next three years. No doubt about that.
Gooden, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. Anybody else? All right. Um, do we want to take a quick five-minute break before we move into our COVID update?
No.
Or not? Okay, we'll keep going then. Just one to offer. All right, so our next item on the agenda is the COVID response update. Tonight's COVID response update includes several items. First, Mr. Garrettson will provide an update on the division's COVID response. Dr. Wickham and Mr. Polly will provide an update on our plan for instructional disruptions. Dr. Bissell is also present to provide an update from the Health Department. And Mr. Garrettson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Meyer, of course, guest here with us this evening. Uh, we did meet back in August prior to the beginning of school and we did say at that time we would come back with an update at this time. Just a couple of slides that we have to share with you this evening. The first slide just speaks to kind of our current situation. I felt like this would be a good reminder for the MCPS team and also it speaks to some questions that we've, we've answered for parents and, and others throughout the beginning of the school year. Uh, so thus far, at this point, we've got last year's, or last week, excuse me, last week's numbers reported there of positive cases. 55 reported cases between August 30th and September 2nd. That took us up to just over 150 as of past Friday. Again, a reminder that cases are reported on our division website. Uh, we do not do currently the direct phone calls or emails that some had become accustomed to last year, but that information is available daily on the division website. Uh, the board did vote into place, uh, universal masking expectations. We can tell you that masking. We can tell you that masking exemptions do require documentation. We worked with our, our legal team to put together a form that's available on the website. And I will tell you, thus far, those exemptions have been very rare, a very small number. Our classrooms are arranged to maximize distancing with three feet or more as the goal per CDC guidance. Our lunches are arranged to always provide three feet of distancing when the mask comes off to eat, a time of concern for lots of people. Again, those outdoor lunch options are available. We did have a couple questions come up and we, we felt like we addressed it but wanted to clarify it again here tonight. Not using any of those plastic dividers in the student setting. The CDC just, they do not include those in any of their guidance anymore, so we have not had those in place between student seating assignments. Masks are not required outdoors. You did have the speaker earlier who mentioned the PE classes. We've encouraged as much outdoor activity as we can because it does provide an opportunity for those masks to come off during the school day. Masks are required on school buses. Again, that's still a federal requirement that if I understand correctly has even been extended already up until January. And of course, we have regular collaboration with the Health Department or the Health District, and I would even go ahead and say more than regular, daily. I speak to Dr. Bissell or her lead epidemiologist, Jason Deese, every day, and that includes weekends, holidays, late at night. They have been super responsive, and I don't ever wanna miss an opportunity to say thanks to that team. They've been of extreme value, I will say, to me personally throughout the pandemic and I think to, to the division as a whole. Our next slide in terms of some updates, just wanna talk a little bit about some things that are in the works, some things that we continue to work toward. The Virginia Department of Education has shared with all school districts across the state that we need to work to put together some attendance and instructional guidelines for both our staff and students due to those anticipated individual or even group quarantines or positive tests. I think as, as has been mentioned at the meeting tonight, you know, we'd love to step away from this and, and just have it go away, but, you know, we're obviously still very involved with the COVID pandemic. The state has recognized, the Department of Education has recognized that schools are gonna have those quarantines and schools are gonna have absenteeism for both students and staff due to positive cases. So we have been directed to coordinate those plans to help continue instruction so that children continue to learn even though they may be at home in a quarantine, though probably not very ill or not ill at all, to continue to offer that educational piece and also to help protect the attendance rate. School divisions would really stand to suffer greatly if we were having to count all of those absences as, as just unexcused absences. So the state has given that guideline, we've been working diligently on it. Mr. Polly and I believe Dr. Wickham is gonna share that plan a little bit later, so I won't go into any detail beyond that. The division has requested at-home kits from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. That's a little bit of a different group that we have worked very closely with all along, but you've probably heard more about VDOE and VDH. Virginia Department of Emergency Management has shared that they have these at-home kits available in some quantity and that school divisions could request those kits. We have made that request already, put it forward. Our intention for, for those at-home kits are to be made available for either staff or student who really need a test kind of in, in an emergency or in a very specific situation where maybe they're having a hard time with an appointment, maybe don't have the funds to get an appointment, or, or it's just really a, a high need. We need that answer quickly to know if someone is positive or not. So we've made that request to VDM to have those available. Don't have them yet, but the anticipation, expectation is that we'll have those to make available as needed. We continue to coordinate our guidelines for students who have only minor symptoms, and I think that was mentioned in public address tonight as well. And that's really tough, right? Because we're always gonna have, always have had those students who have the scratchy throat or the runny nose or that little bit of a cough. And I think all of us at one time or another have kind of spoken to, well, those are my allergies, or well, it's because I was around the campfire, or well, I was screaming at a football game. So those have been really difficult to, to set up an arrangement to where those guidelines make sense as to when are we sending home students unnecessarily or sending a student to a doctor unnecessarily versus really being careful to protect the rest of the population at the school. So we've been working very closely with the Health Department and also some local doctors' offices. We've had a number of doctors' offices who have called us and said, kind of, what's your thought, what's your expectation? Because we've had some situations there as well where we either would maybe let a student back or we either would exclude a student for longer, but their doctor's note says otherwise. So we've had to work through that quite a bit. We did resume our New River Valley Public Health Task Force weekly meetings. I think we started those back on the eighth or ninth of August. I'm a part of that team. Ms. Drake continues to serve on the public information communication side of that team. We're also represented on weekly New River Valley Regional Commission's Public Health Liaison Meetings. Mr. Knott and I participate in those weekly meetings where we meet with other school divisions now all the way down into far southwest Virginia, working with the team to share good ideas, collaborate, get the latest information. We are in the process of scheduling our in-flu, in-school flu clinics for October as we typically do. We will also have the COVID vaccine available for students during those dates if a parent would wish to have their child receive the vaccine at that time in school at no cost through, through the collaboration with the Health Department. And then lastly, on this slide, we do have a meeting coming up later this week with the Virginia Department of Education, Virginia Department of Health to discuss screening, testing options. This program was introduced right at the very end of the last school year, talked about a little bit through the summer, and, you know, at this point, we've, we have submitted our interest in the program and we'll get more information regarding that program on September ninth. I think at that point, those are the updates I would have to share. I believe Mr. Polly has the next portion.
Thank you, Jason. I realize those are a lot of words on the screen. They are there for your reference. That's Senate Bill thirteen oh three and then a communication that we received from Dr. Lane through his superintendent's memos that he provides. In short, both of those documents speak to the need for us to anticipate the possibility of quarantines and closures. And they ask us to consider those in the smallest groups possible, to consider those as individual student quarantines, individual teacher quarantines, perhaps an entire class quarant, classroom quarantine, and if, if it's, if necessary to close or temporarily close an entire school. Really, something that's not in the plan is the notion of closing the entire school division. We are trying to make this as small as possible and to only last as long as necessary with the goal being to get everybody back as quickly and as safely as possible to resume in-person instruction, which I think we all have learned that is the most effective. It is important to point out that this plan does not include any hybrid teaching. That is a commitment that we've made to the teachers in the school division that we would not have them do hybrid teaching again this year. That proved to be extraordinarily difficult. We did give them Wednesdays off to do the extraordinary amount of planning that was required for that. We don't have that this year. So we will not be offering any type of hybrid instruction. So you'll see in the plan, and I don't know if you wanna have the, the plan up on the screen or should they just look at it, if they can click where it says school staff information on the secondary plan.
Yeah, just, yeah, if you would hit it, just so we, we definitely don't wanna go over all of it.
No, I'm not, I'm not planning on going over all of it. But you'll see that it's broken down into the first row, or the first two rows is individual students quarantined. That really, as you read it, that is not unlike what we do already when students are out sick for a short period of time or an extended period of time. We provide them with assignments. If they're sick, too sick to come to school but well enough to do their work, we can give them their work to work on while they're at home. But if they're too sick to do work while they're at home quarantined, then we'll make arrangements as we would normally. We would give them makeup work when they return and establish some reasonable due dates for that work. The teachers would work with them. If you scroll up, Morgan, I'm sorry, down, thanks. The next group of things for us to consider, individual classroom closures. When Dr. Wickham comes up and talks, speaks to this issue for elementary, it's a good bit different because I wanna remind you all, in secondary, if we close one teacher's classroom and quarantine all the kids from, say, my first period class and you quarantine me as well, my second period class and my third period class and my fourth period class, they're still coming, so we're gonna have to get a substitute for there to be a body in the room to provide supervision. And all those, all of those students are still going to all of their other classes. So if I'm the teacher and I'm at home and I'm well enough, I'm just home out of abundance of caution or quarantined because of an exposure, then I'm going to provide the assignments. It's going to provide, be provided asynchronously and the substitute will actually have to implement those lesson plans. But I'll be at the ready in case there are questions. I'll be at home and I'll be available on Google Meet if there are questions or if I wanna provide just a little bit of instruction either through a recording or by sharing some slides or some written directions. If I'm too sick, then we would seek a qualified sub in that area to provide those lessons. And if we can't find a qualified sub in that area, we would ask the department head or a member of that department to help out with making those lesson plans. And then, of course, last but not least would be if we have to close an entire school building, we would wanna do that temporarily. And in that situation, we would like to provide synchronous remote instruction and keep the kids on schedule according to the master's schedule and on the bell's schedule. But we don't want kids, again, to be, we've learned that you don't want children to be online too long, so we're saying about half of the scheduled class time would be synchronous, which means they're in front of a teacher live, and the other half would be asynchronous, where the teacher's available for questions and interaction, but not providing live, interactive instruction. That does not have to be, by the way, fifty at the front end and fifty at the back end. It could be throughout the, the period, roughly fifty percent of the time synchronous and roughly fifty percent asynchronous. And then the, the caveat at the bottom just refers to our, which I know you've heard of before, inclement weather plan, where for up to ten days this year, if we use a code B, we can provide asynchronous assignments and do a, a check-in procedure similar to what we did last year on Wednesdays, and we can count those as instructional days and not have to take them off or add them to the end of the year. Maybe we should have Dr. Wickham present, oh, there she is, she sneaked up on me. Have her present about elementary and then see if you have any questions overall.
All right, the same, Morgan, if you would click on the elementary staffing plan. As you can see, they look very similar, so for our parents at home, same looking format. The only thing that's really different here is Mr. Polly said individual students quarantine, same thing, children will be allowed to make up their work and, and be counted present for doing so. And if they're too sick when they return and bring their notes, still, we can count the children present and they'll make up their work. If a teacher is quarantined and the teacher is sick and her students are still coming to school, then we would have a sub working with that class just as we would now. But if a teacher is quarantined and she's not sick and we would have to have a sub in that classroom, then that teacher, he or she then could remote in and do some co-teaching with that sub that was in the classroom, and then that way, that teacher wouldn't have to take any sick days. She's quarantined, he or she's sick and can work from home with that sub. If there is a classroom that's quarantined, then the teacher would provide assignments to the students. In the typical format, we would ask that Google Classroom be used. Of course, at the beginning of the school year, it takes a good month to teach kindergartners and first graders about Google Classroom because of last year, many of our students are already prepared. But if that classroom does close, the teacher then would provide assignments through Google Classroom and then other formats as well as needed for that age level, so potentially having hard copies available for children. And then, as Mr. Polly said, and Clay said, in case of that full school closure, then the expectation would be synchronous instruction. Children would follow their normal schedule, their specialty teachers would provide synchronous instruction, and again, there would be those natural opportunities for screen breaks. Also, I think we failed to mention too that for our children who have IEPs, our classroom teachers would continue to work with their special education colleagues to ensure that students' accommodations were met. Any questions about the elementary or the secondary plans?
So, Mr. Polly, you said we, you don't have a plan, so to speak, if the whole district would have to go down? But wouldn't that just be adapted from the building to the whole district?
Yes, ma'am. For temporary full school closure, that could be all of our schools simultaneously. It certainly could be. Could be one of them, could be half of them, could be all of them. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Go ahead, for now.
So I guess one of my concerns on, first of all, I, I'm glad that we're doing this. You know, I had, this has kind of been a concern of mine and it's something that I hoped we wouldn't get to, but obviously, you know, we're in a very different place right now than we were a month ago, where we were expecting these types of quarantines and things to maybe just be a one-off here and there that, you know, I think the plan originally was, well, that the teachers will just catch those students up. And obviously, we're, we're kind of beyond that situation now. You know, before I was asking about the, the idea of, you know, recording classes and things like that, and I understand, I, I've talked to a lot of teachers, I understand the, the problems that we had with, that they had anyway, and that I guess we all had with, with hybrid. My concern about the asynchronous right now is that in order to do asynchronous instruction, I would think that that takes additional time for the teacher to prepare and to give that instruction. Do they have the time? Do they have, you know, I mean, we, we keep talking about what teachers have been through this past year and the burdens that we've placed on them, and we kind of made it to this year through the summer thinking like, all right, we're gonna kind of get back to some level of normal. And here we are again, kind of with, with a whole new model, you know, with the asynchronous. And again, I'm not against it, I, I think it's good that we're coming up with plans for this, but, yeah, I don't, I don't have the answers either, but I guess, and I'm not sure exactly what my question is, but I do wanna know, you know, have, has, has this been run by, you know, were teachers involved in putting any of this together? Have we talked to teachers or, you know, do we know how realistic it is to be able to effectively, you know, pull this off right now?
So this was something that we needed to pull together quickly, obviously, but within the next couple of weeks, both Mr. Polly and I will be meeting with our advisory committees to talk about these. In terms of asynchronous instruction for our students, of course, the first spring that, when we had to shut down, that's what we did for our elementary students, and it certainly isn't ideal. But we also learned last year that trying to teach our younger students virtually wasn't ideal either. And we felt like in the short term, for a week or two, that would be more realistic than trying to get parents and grandparents set with the technology to move quickly to synchronous mode. So in terms of little children, asynchronous for the short term certainly would make more sense, but then if, like we said, if we had a full school closure, then obviously we would need to move to synchronous. So we feel like we certainly have some experience with it, but obviously, none of it's ideal.
To answer your question, Mr. Chabaka, I, I just would have to answer as a former teacher myself. The, the heaviest lift for, for a teacher is going to be when you have a number of students who are individually quarantined, because then I'm having to lesson plan for my classes that are in person. And then during my planning time, where I'm supposed to be planning those lessons, now I also have to prepare for these, you know, one, two, half a dozen, a dozen kids who were individually quarantined. That's not terribly unlike what all teachers have had to do for when students are absent. It's actually something I was not very fond of when students were absent. I had to spend an inordinate amount of time with them when they came back after school, during lunch, during my planning period, whatever little time I could beg, borrow and steal to meet with them. So it's, it's been a part of teaching for as long as I can remember, that you have to do something for students who have been absent. And we're not really expecting them to do anything too detailed and outstanding, they just would take their current lesson plans and take, many teachers these days use slides for their lessons. And to provide those slides to students with some suggested things to read, maybe some YouTube videos or a brief recording of themselves explaining something and then making themselves, telling students when they're available for questions. So in some sense, that makes it a little easier than waiting for students to come back and having to spend time with them. and having to spend time with them, beg, borrow and steal at different times to meet with them.
I, I do think it is part of what you have to do as a teacher, but no one has had to do it to the degree that teachers have had to do it over the last year and a half. So I don't think you can compare it to your days of teaching, which probably didn't even involve
Technology.
Technology, no offense.
No offense taken. I used the whiteboard, it was like really great when I got a whiteboard.
I was all excited when a smart board ended up in my room. And I had, I got rid of the overhead projector. But, so it's, it's a different animal right now. In addition, in, in my visits to schools over the last few weeks, what I'm seeing also is that we are really limited in subs within several of the schools. And Danny has been very kind to provide information. Thank you, Danny, for that. But I mean, it, it's a fact that we are, it's hard to get subs right now. And so teachers are also being stressed to teach, to fill in as subs during their planning periods. So I'm not sure how, I mean, asking teachers to do all of this, plus we're filling it, that, it's, one of the things, when I went to visit the schools, I just out of, I just said, if there's anything I could do for you, if I, anything I could give you or help you with, what would it be? Every single one said, give me more time. I need more time. I'm tired. We're exhausted. Even principals, my staff's exhausted. They're tired and we're only two weeks into the school year and, and they're already burning out. And that's, I, I realize that it's a fact of life and I know. I get, I understand all that and so it's a, it's a tough situation. But I really worry about our, our, our teachers. And it's hard to even hire people now because it's, it's not an easy job. So I just, I think, I don't know what the answer is, how to provide them with more time or how to ease some of the, the pain. But I wish we could think about that. And I realize you had to put this together quickly, but I'm gonna guess that probably very few teachers were involved in the development of these plans. And I think that's, this is another example of where those are the people we should be really looking to, to help put together these, these kinds of plans.
Let me say this. I think that the plan that we developed was based on guidance from the Department of Education. And we have basically put into place the minimum that they're telling us that we can do. And so I think that needs to be understood, that this is not just our plan and something we came up with. We looked at the DOE and we ended up with the minimum. In fact, I'm not so sure they're real excited about us doing asynchronous learning. They've actually mentioned that in some of their, some of their webinars to us. But we understand that the hybrid approach is difficult. And so we're definitely not doing that. But the minimum we have to do is asynchronous to create, you know, something for the students. And it, it will look like, like Ms. Dr. Wickham said earlier, when we got out March thirteenth, two years ago, till the end of the school, that's what it will look like. Teachers putting assignments online and, and kids completing them. And, and so, you know, that's, that's the minimum that I think we can do and still get away with calling it instruction and being able to count it as instructional days. Now, you know, we have done some things. Let me remind everyone of what we've done to give teachers additional planning time, especially at the elementary and at the middle schools. You know, last year, you know, we added back the planning period for teachers now having two planning periods at the middle school for the first time in thirteen years. Okay? So now they get two planning. At the elementary school, we have, we added recess aids. So now they get the recess time when we can correspond aids and they show, and they show up. All right? So that's, that's, you know, an obstacle too. And we understand that.
Unfortunately, at the middle schools though, because I've visited two middle schools, they're not getting two plannings. Because what's happening is they're having to sub instead of getting the extra planning. So they're not getting
Okay, yes.
And I realize that you've provided, we've done that. I know that. But it's not anything they've been able to take advantage of.
Well, many, most have. I mean, we looked at one, one school and out of sixty-five teachers, nine teachers on the worst day had to provide coverage in a classroom. This was a couple of weeks ago when we had a, a difficult time at one of our middle schools. And so it's, you know, we, we know this is happening, but most teachers are getting their two planning periods. And, you know, just to remind folks that we're one of the few school divisions that actually do this, we are not required to get two planning periods. In fact, one, the way it's written, one could be a duty period for teachers. That could be required, required anyway. We don't do that here. But also, we are, we are giving pay to our teachers to actually do that. No other school division does that. And so, you know, at the end of the day, I know it's unfortunate and I know, I know teaching is hard. But at the end of the day, we have to cover the classes and supervise students. And I, but I know, and I will validate that it is tough being a teacher. And I know that. And it's tough having to give up even one of your two planning periods. But, you know, we're in a situation that that is the case. Now, a lot of folks want to take it back to COVID and quarantines and that kind of thing. It's really, that's really not the case. For the most part, we're not, we're not short of subs because of COVID directly or, or cases in our schools where staff members are being quarantined. There is a shortage of workers, not only here but across America, finding folks to work.
Everywhere.
And so, you know, and we're doing our best to recruit and get folks in and sign them up to sub and, because we know it's an issue. We're gonna work hard to get more substitutes. But, you know,
And I appreciate that. And I know that's all that's being done, Dr. Meyer. I totally understand that. But I sat here last, last meeting and all I heard is how we're doing fine. We got enough subs. We got enough people. Everything's good. Everything's great. And now all of a sudden, we're not. And so I guess I just would like us to be really honest about where we are. I'm glad to hear that we are being straightforward. We don't have enough subs. We don't have enough people to cover the classrooms. And that's where we are right now. We are not in, it's not all rainbows and butterflies. There's some really difficult times out there and people are very stressed out and it's, it's a very difficult situation. And I worry about the mental health of not only our students, but also of our, our staff because they're being put under tremendous amounts of stress right now.
Sure they are. And I understand that.
And I think for, for me, I, I have thought about it a little bit and I've even asked some teachers, what do you think? I mean, I, I'm kind of with you, Sue, that I don't, I don't know that I have the answers. And so, I mean, I commend you guys for what we're doing. I don't mean any of this to be a criticism of that, but, but I do want us to think about, we, especially as a board, to think ahead to the things that we can do to, you know, to make the life easier on the teachers. And I think, you know, the, I think the overarching thing, of course, for anybody's
Sign up to sub.
What's that?
Sign up to sub.
Sign up to substitute. I've already got a job that demands forty-five hours of me, so, and then this one, so. But I think first thing is that, you know, I, I think in any job, you know, being appreciated goes a long way, right? So for me, that's kind of the overarching thing. You know, one thing that you guys brought up last time and I agreed with, with you after you, you made the case for it, you convinced me, you know, about flexibility. To, you know, some teachers may prefer to do things one way versus another. But I think, you know, as much flexibility as we can give them. I don't know if, you know, I, I had some correspondence with a teacher this week. I mean, people, you know, write to us, all the teachers reach out to us all the time and I always take that opportunity to write back and ask them questions about the things that we're dealing with. But, you know, one teacher was, you know, commented on how some of this asynchronous stuff can, can take time and was lamenting that they couldn't record themselves anymore. But I thought, I thought we had said last time that that's an option if they want to do it. And so I think that, you know, the, the next step is, you know, beyond the flexibility is, you know, maybe there still needs to be some, some level of support and training. You know, even if it's just a reminder email that, hey, here are the things that are available to you if you need help from IT, you know, to be able to record yourself, audio, video, whatever you want to do, you can do it. You don't have to do it, but this is just an option. And then, you know, the time thing, I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that. Oh, sorry, the, the third thing I was gonna say was, was offloading. You know, we are asking a lot of our teachers, I, I had some interaction with, you know, masking has been brought up a bunch by parents and teachers and stuff. And as far as the enforcement of that goes, you know, I know that some teachers anyway are having a, a hard time having to do that. And it affects relationships with the, with the kids, especially in between classes and the hallways and things like that. And I know that that's something probably that teachers have done for, for years. But, you know, like, like Sue was saying, it's a different year and we keep adding, it's just one little more demand, one little more demand. And so this is where I gotta go back to that CARES Act money. And I say, you know, maybe we need to hire some, you know, if we can, maybe we can hire some people to help out with those tasks, you know, in between classes and things like that.
The problem is, we can't hire any, we're having trouble hiring anybody.
I realize that, but, but I, I realize that, but I still think that when you, you try to hire, maybe you don't hire all your positions, but maybe you can hire some people to help offload those things. So, so that's the type of thing I'm thinking about. And then at the end of the day, you know, if you can't give the teachers their, you know, some of that time back when things are, are tough, you know, maybe we use, I, I don't know if we can do this, but maybe we do use some of that CARES Act money like we did last year to give some kind of bonuses or things like that. You know, I know in some cases we're doing, we are giving more money for some of the substitution, subwork and whatnot. But I, I think it's something I would seriously give some, some thought to. I don't think it would take a whole lot, but I think it would be a good, you know, encouragement and to really show appreciation for extra time that it might take, so.
You know, something we can look at. The way we've looked at how we pay teachers when they do use their planning time is based on a per-period basis that we would normally pay a sub. And something that we can discuss and, and see how it can possibly be arranged and how much it would cost is, is actually looking at paying teachers more than that, that fraction of a, because like fifteen dollars is what they get paid.
It's like, we're paying the minimum wage to cover a class.
Well, they're getting paid fifteen dollars.
Right, but
To cover a class.
And a class is about fifty, almost an hour long.
Okay, so, so anyway, so something we could explore is, you know, is actually, you know, possibly raising compensation using the CARES Act. It will make it, you know, at least a little more bearable to think I'm using this time to, you know, give up my time. And so that's something that Tommy and I can talk about and sort of evaluate and seeing how many teachers are having to cover, how many periods, you know, right now. And maybe we can up it from fifteen dollars to, to more money during that time using the CARES Act. And so we'll, we'll look at that and I'll, I'll get back with you on that. I think that's something that we could possibly do.
Well, and maybe this might be a conversation that needs to go to the Department of Education because requiring a two-year degree for a substitute is where some of the problem lies.
We don't anymore.
Yeah.
We dropped that.
Okay, well then, I don't understand why you're having, okay.
There's nobody to work out there.
They don't require any college to be a sub?
Yeah, you have to have a two-year degree.
You have to have a two-year degree.
We have a sixty hours. I'm sorry.
Sixty hours, okay.
Now that's, now here's the deal. That's our rule. That's not the Department of Education rule.
Then I'm sure that's not something that's completely understood yet because I know lots of people that'll say, well, yeah, I don't have that two-year degree or I don't have this. And lots of people that, I mean, a two-year degree in, and I'm just making this out, so don't anybody throw anything at me, a two-year degree in cake making. I mean, and they're a substitute. There's lots of people that I think would be a great-founded substitute teacher that does not have a completed two-year degree. So we're hurting ourselves by doing that a little bit, I think. That's just an opinion of mine.
Maybe my initial reaction was a former school division, we actually had the same issue and we dropped it. You did not, you had to have a high school diploma to be a substitute teacher.
Brontok County does the same thing.
Brontok County does that, high school degree.
Well, let me, Danny, we used to use a lot, get a lot of subs from Virginia Tech. Do we not get those any longer? Because I would think that that's, you know, a great place. You get juniors and seniors and...
We still get some, but the numbers have dropped.
I mean, and they're all vaccinated.
Well, I've got
We still get some, but we don't get a lot. And what, what we are finding right now is a lot of times their schedules aren't lining up
Absolutely.
where they can sub. We've got some, we're looking at our subs right now. And we've asked our subs who haven't yet taken a day, accepted a job this year. We've asked them why. And many of them are tech students and they're, the, the response is, my schedule doesn't work out this year where I, right now where I can sub. I plan to sub in the spring, different schedule. So, so that's, that's part of the problem. And I think there's many more opportunities right now. I, I went to Gobbler Fest Saturday to check it out because that's an area where Dominic and I are gonna recruit next year at Gobbler Fest.
Yeah.
And I went to check it out, see what other organizations were there. And there are so many more opportunities for kids, for college students right now to, to, to work. And a lot of those jobs are on campus and they fit into their schedule a whole lot better.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I've got a senior at tech and I can't imagine her taking a whole day to substitute with her schedule, her homework, her classes. There's no way. So I don't see how they could even consider doing that.
Ms. Cass, I'm afraid I was misunderstood with something. I just wanted to set the record straight. I'm not trying to compare my teaching experience from the past to the past year and a half. That, that is incomparable, but what I was
I don't think either of us could do that, Carl.
What I was, what I was saying was, was that when you have absent students and you have to work with them to make up work, that's been a reality for teaching forever.
It's always been a real pain as a teacher.
And that's, and that's the heaviest lift for secondary is I, I'm just keeping on, keeping on with my in-person students. But I've got a few kids who are out that now I have to plan for asynchronous instruction. If it gets to the point where it's a lot of students, we're probably looking at an entire classroom closure and then I'm quarantined as well and then that's all I'm planning for is asynchronous instruction. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't get misunderstood.
And one of the things that we're looking at in terms of funding is to hire additional IAs if we can find them to get to Mr. Chabaka's point. We do want IAs, particularly at the elementary level, to be able to help not only with instruction, but also those clerical duties. So if I'm not in the classroom hoping with a small group, I might be able to make copies. I can grade papers. And just a shout out to our teachers, of course, I see elementary ones. And they're so fantastic at routines and procedures. All right, I've got these three kiddos out, these three over here. Every time I pass something out, give an assignment, put it in the folder and get it ready to send home. Teachers really are amazing and no matter how terrible this situation is in a pandemic, I just can't say it enough, everything that they do and the ideas that they come up with, they're doing a great job despite all the challenges.
Barbara, are we getting, are parents still volunteering to come in the schools to help? Are we allowing parents to go?
Yes, we are allowing volunteers, of course. We expect them to follow all the mitigation strategies, but yes, we are allowing volunteers. And tech students and Radford students, yes, as many people as we can get in to help. Certainly, we've allowed that, again, as long as they're following the mitigation strategies.
Yeah, I know at the elementary level, that's really helpful, so.
Penny, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got several. So just to follow up with the sub situation. So we ended up having to shut down secondary last year so that we could make sure we had subs to cover the elementary. Because, so where are we at as far as how we're getting subs into the elementary schools?
We're only having issues really in one elementary school on, on a more regular basis and that's Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. And that is a school that has historically had issues with substitutes. The majority of our other elementary schools are not seeing issues with that. For example, today, we were at a hundred percent fill rate for ten of our schools. We had, we had, the other schools, we had varying rates where we had two out of three, four out of six, the worst one was a four out of nine. Again, that was at a middle school that has historically had, had a high absence rate with teachers in the last several years and has had a, not a very good sub fill rate either in the last few years. But overall, from our elementary schools, it has not been a, a huge issue this year. It's really been more at the secondary level, at, at the one school.
Danny, can you talk about the full-time subs?
Yes, we have added full-time subs again. We're in the process of adding full-time subs, meaning we have a sub assigned to a school. They go there almost every day. They can work a hundred and thirty days as a substitute. And so we're, we're using them. And we've actually, in, in locations where they weren't needed, pulled them and sent them to other schools where we did need them. But it, it's, it's, we're struggling to even fill those this year. We were able to fill them pretty quick last year. We filled another school today. I think we've got three left to, to find. And just haven't had, just about everybody who has applied has been hired for one of those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So now let's get back to what's going on as far as what's happening in the classrooms with cases of quarantine, positive cases. And a big one for me is how we are reporting. Because I've been saying all along, we are not doing enough. So one thing that concerns me is to have a parent say, who's also a physician, say that her child was sitting next to a child who was say that her child was sitting next to a child who was tested positive, but then was still allowed to come back to school and was symptomatic. How could that be?
Okay, that's a good question. Let me ask this question. Are we finished with the instructional piece? Are there any slides after this, Jason? Is that it? All right, so I guess moving towards, y'all, y'all are good.
I must have misunderstood. I thought she said that they had symptoms.
Yes.
Not tested positive, but symptoms.
Even if they had symptoms?
Right, I understand, but I, I didn't, I don't think I heard the tested positive part.
Whatever, but in the situation that we're in right now, the same thing would be is that we have people tested.
I agree, I just want to make sure that I didn't hear correctly.
To the number of, of self or in-home tests that we would be getting? Because you said there's a number, but I haven't heard a number, what that number is.
Yes, ma'am. VDEM did not release to me the number they had in supply, uh, and they could not tell me the number they had in supply. So the request I made was two hundred. And, and my question was, is, you know, in speaking with VDEM, is that fair or reasonable based upon a school division with approximately ten thousand students?
No.
The, the answer I got was, we're not sure, we, we're not even sure how many we've got. So right now, the request is made for two hundred. We may get two hundred, we may get the option to ask for more later, or we may not get even the two hundred. But the number we requested initially was two hundred.
Of course, we're meeting on Thursday and we'll be able to get information back to you as to how many tests that, that will involve.
Correct, that's separate from VDEM.
That's separate from this. Yeah, we don't have the, the details of that yet.
These, these kits are intended to be essentially for emergency use. We, we need to test quickly. We have a family who's having a hard time getting a test, securing a test. This would be the test we would make available to them. It's separate from the, the screening model that we meet on Thursday.
Would we want Dr. Bissel to go ahead and do her?
No, because I've still got more questions.
Well, I'm, I was just wondering if her presentation would help you with those questions.
I don't know, that's why I'm still going to be asking questions.
Okay.
Uh, so when we're talking about, one of the things we have to remember is that we are not in the same situation we were in last year. Last year, we had half the students in who were in person, half a day, and then the other half, the other half of the day. So, the space that's being taken up in the building is double and it's for five days a week. So, when we're saying that we're still able to keep three feet between students, especially at lunchtimes, that, that's just hard for me to believe. That that is something that we can do. Because being in classrooms last year when we just had half a class um, and we had a higher number of students who were opting in person, it was, it was a challenge then. And now that we have the whole class and the whole building, on my visit to Christiansburg Middle School, it was overwhelming, the number of students who were in the building in the situation that we're in. Because the, at lunchtime, they were doing a great job. The students were sitting forward to a table. They were wearing their masks when they needed to wear their masks. There were situations where we have children who the masks don't fit and we need to, you know, talk about how we make sure those things are corrected by little things like twisting the earpieces, you know, to make them, pull them closer to their faces. But for folks to think that teachers aren't stressed out and administrators aren't stressed out with all the children in the building and trying to keep up with everything you need to keep up with, plus do your maths, your math correctly, actually looking for symptoms that children may be having, is just overwhelming for me to think about them doing that. It's also, um, the reporting, it, it is not sufficient. We're at the highest level that we have ever been and you don't know if it's in your classroom. You don't know if it's a child, if it's a teacher, if it's administrator or staff, and, and that's just wrong. People need to know what's going on. And as has been stated, when we don't give them information, then it goes out in twenty different directions. And then we're looked at as, why aren't you doing this about this? And that wasn't even a situation, because we haven't given it information. You have half a class out on quarantine, and I mentioned this last year, when we had a situation at Fallen Branch, and all the cafeteria folks were out and nobody knew what was going on. But the assumption was that everybody was positive, and that was not the case. But we not, we're not giving any information so that folks know what actually is happening. And this whole thing about, well, if you drill down too far, people can identify, people know. Because community talks and social media is just crazy with how much information is out there, whether it be right or wrong. So, I believe we as a board need to reevaluate how we're sending information out to this community because what we're doing right now is just wrong.
Let me say, I, I, I agree with you that, yeah, social media sometimes does leak who it is. But us as an organization, we can't be the ones who actually leak who it is.
And I didn't say we should.
Well.
I'm just saying, we need to give all the information that we can.
And, and I think.
And we haven't been.
Okay, and I, I, I'm not sure. I mean, what else, what else, you know, that we can actually do without identifying kits?
We can say how many quarantines there are.
And there's a problem with that.
How many cases there are.
Right, we, we say cases, we don't, we don't say quarantines, and we talked about this this week.
Student or staff.
And we, we talked, we talked about the quarantines this week, and there's some difficulties in quarantines. Jason?
Yeah, quarantines can be very difficult because firstly, and Dr. Bissel may speak to this following me, I don't believe the Health Department maintains or reports lists of quarantines either. But we, we, just for today, two good examples today. Um, we had a parent reach out and say, um, they have had an experience in their family where they lost someone near and dear due to COVID. And the student involved just is really having a hard time being in school. So that parent essentially said to the principal, we're going to take her out for ten or fourteen days. And she still wants to do her work, she still wants to be involved, she's just having a hard time handling this. That's not a quarantine from a Health Department or from a doctor. Um, that is a parent's decision. We also have had a family who had, uh, several positive cases in, in their family and went ahead and said, let's take out all of the students, all of the students who are in our family. And the Health Department has really recommended ten days, but we would really feel better if it were fourteen. So they said, we want to go ahead and take fourteen rather than ten. Another example that happens very commonly is perhaps, um, a sibling is going to test and they're waiting on that test result, a PCR, so it's several days. The, the, the other sibling, the rest of the children in the house will basically quarantine awaiting that test result. So you've got a two or three little day, quick little quarantine. So all of those numbers, at some point, it, it's hard to generate a great deal of use from them. They, they do become rather large numbers as people deal with their situations, their individual situations. And they really can stand to, to just raise the anxiety of everyone because many of them never result in positive cases anyway. That would be my concern with quarantine, and I certainly can let, uh, a medical expert talk about it following me. The other piece in regards to staff versus student, uh, we certainly could share that at this point, if that's the will of the board. We did share it last year. I would have been concerned about it early on when we were getting those first few cases because it does lend itself to being identifiable. Uh, but now we certainly have enough cases that, that it's not going to be identifiable information at that point. We certainly can share that. Although I also kind of wonder how useful that's going to be to parents when we realize that most of our youngest students, well, all of our youngest students are not eligible for a vaccine, uh, whereas all of our adults, uh, are eligible, if they're at least interested. So those numbers are probably immediately going to be skewed, uh, because of the availability of the vaccine. But certainly, we're here to do the will of the board and, uh, those are, those are examples that I can provide for your consideration.
Okay, so, the three examples that you gave, I believe all of those except for where there was a, uh, death and the child was not handling it well. I don't know if the child wasn't handling because it was COVID that caused the death or they, and they didn't feel comfortable with being in the building because of the risk. That might be a different situation, but the rest of them are quarantines. Whether it is three days, whether it's fourteen days, it's a quarantine. And those things need to be reported. Whether it results in whether there was a, a positive test that came out of it or not, it's still a quarantine and it needs to be reported, or people naturally tend to lean toward the worst that if we've got fifty people on quarantine, that means thirty of them are probably positive. And that is not the case in most cases, right? As you just said. But we have got to give more information about what's going on in the buildings, especially with the level of positive cases that we have. And I'm still not sure why they're not being considered outbreaks.
What is the downside to, to telling parents what's going on in their classroom? I guess it was Mr. Hudson said when he came up, you know, you, you, we can tell, tell parents when somebody has lice. We can tell parents when somebody's got chickenpox, but we can't tell parents if there's someone who has in the, in the classroom who has tested positive or quarantining. I guess I'm not, I don't understand. It, what we heard this evening from the few parents who spoke is the word transparency, and that's, I have heard that so many times over the last week. I want transparency, I want transparency, I'm not getting communication, I don't know what's going on in my child's classroom. Some parents are keeping children home because they don't know, they're, they're afraid. And, and I, I'm not sure what we're afraid of. Are we afraid that we're going to look bad because we have a number of people quarantining?
No, we're not afraid of anything. We're not.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
So let me, I'll answer your question if you want.
Well, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
And then you can. Um, it, I, I don't think it's that, but it's, what would be the downside to giving more information and letting people know? And I think part of what's happened too is like last year you had all the phone calls, and I know how much you love doing that. And you're really dying to get to do that again. But I, I think that people, as much as they found it annoying, they actually now sit back and say, I kind of appreciated that because I felt like at least somebody was communicating with me. And now it's just, go look at the dashboard. Well, dashboard's not the easiest thing to figure out. Um, I've gotten a little confused on it myself. Okay, somebody's stealing my car. Um, and I think that people are just looking for information and I, I don't think you can over-communicate in a situation like this. I don't think over-communication is a bad thing when people are concerned about their child's lives.
You know, and I, I think we can't over-communicate and I think we have. Um, what's, what's, what happened is, is we can look at the data when we send out calls. We sent out a very important call, uh, I believe last week, week before. We can tell how many actually answered the phone calls. Folks have stopped answering our calls when we actually make calls now on things that we really need them to, to know about. They're just ignoring our calls. And we've got to that point, and I think that's the point where we're over-communicating. And we're not here to hide anything, nothing at all. In fact, today is a great example of, um, that sort of comparison to the, the lice situation, okay? Uh, we had a class.
Right.
All right.
And I'm, I'm glad that we, we were, did that.
Exactly, so we had a class.
Time we've done that.
That we had, well, it's, it's because the first time it's happened.
I know, but I mean, it's the first time we've been really, uh, but it's the first time we've been really straightforward and, and honest.
It's the first time it's happened. Right, so it's the first time it's happened. We haven't had an outbreak in a individual class until, until today, okay? And so, we've taken care of it basically like we would take care of a lice situation. Um, it's the exact same situation. We've contacted every, um, parent in that class with personal phone calls, letting them know the situation, what we're going to do, how, how we're going to handle it. In fact, we've done it two days in a row. So, um, and then we've contacted the school. Of course, when we do the contact for the school, we don't identify the individual classroom that this is happening in, all right, which we think's important in terms of privacy. Um, but our Health Department did a great job in coming over and helping, you know, um, test kids in that class today and, um, and we've straightened it out. And now there's, that, that classroom is going to be quarantined until next Wednesday and they'll be receiving asynchronous instruction until next Wednesday. So today's the first example we've been able to actually get to show that, that we are going to do this, that we're going to be transparent. We're going to let parents know, if there's an individual classroom that needs to be addressed, then we're going to address it. And we're not going to hide anything.
Well, what I've heard from parents from that school and that classroom is that they've been asking for information about this for days. And that these cases were reported and now it's come out, all of a sudden, it's all starting to come out. But I don't think we were transparent quick enough. I'm glad we're doing what we're doing and I'm glad that we're being, we're trying very hard to be transparent now, but I think that we have not been. And I, I even heard this gentleman this evening say the same thing. It's, the, I've heard from several parents in that class that they have, this has been brewing for over a week. It's been brewing for a week and now we're finally closing down the classroom.
We, we contacted based on the number of cases that we knew at the time. And it was not, um, an abnormal rate at the time that we did, in, in terms of, we contacted and made contact, added into the data dashboard like any other classroom, uh, when we had that one or two case situation. Uh, which is the case everywhere. So, um, it's just simply not true. We, we reacted, and I'm sorry people feel this way, but we reacted based on the information we had on positive cases. As, as, as those cases, um, escalated, then we escalated our communication, obviously. But, you know, we're still not in a situation, if we were to go, if we went to, early last week, I think, how many positives did we have early, early last week in that class, for instance? One, two?
A very, I, I mean, are, are we going to talk about this?
I mean, I'm just saying, just in general.
Very small number.
Yeah, very small number, which is the case sporadically throughout the division.
What's a very small number?
It's like one or two at most, I think, okay?
Is it, one or two?
I mean, or.
Or three or four?
This is part of the communication that we're trying to avoid.
Right.
Um, I'm happy to share with the, the board in closed session.
Few. There were not enough for us to do any more than what we've actually said.
This parent wants to know, how many people in that classroom were positive? Don't say just a few, how many?
I think they're saying we can't say that when it's identified.
And that's where the frustration lies. That's where the frustration lies.
Yeah.
Because if, because if there are one or two positive cases in my child's classroom, I want to know about it. I want to know about it.
On the dashboard, those are weekly.
You don't, it doesn't tell you what classroom it's in.
And that's part of the issue. A week after you find out that there's a positive case, then it appears someplace. That information needs to be shared when we find out about it.
So one case, so if they.
I, as a parent, can make a decision what I want to do with my child.
So at what point do you want us to notify parents if there's a positive case in their classroom?
When we find out that it's a positive case.
But the problem with that is we're identifying that individual student.
It's a privacy issue.
That's the privacy issue that we're dealing with.
And I'm, understand that, and I've heard that since last year, and I still disagree with it.
Well, it's, I mean.
Because it is going to be out there anyway. And nine times out of ten, it's going to be out there almost before we even know that there's a positive case.
But if it's out there, it's not our liability.
Exactly.
Well, okay.
Right, it is not our liability, um, to, to disclose information about a specific child. And Brad?
Well, speaking of privacy, Dr. Meyer, today, students were being tested in front of other students. Parents, kids came home and said, yeah, oh, Johnny was getting a, a COVID test. Why, so how is that not a, an invasion of privacy if you're seeing children getting tested?
You got the information from email, you need to give us time to look into that, okay? Well, because we'll figure that out, all right?
Well, nobody responded to my email, so I'm sorry.
Well, we don't, we don't know yet. You, you sent it this afternoon late. You need to give us some time to look into it, okay?
Well, you can at least acknowledge that I sent it and say, that's. Well, you can at least acknowledge that I sent it and say that's important.
Okay, it's important, we'll look into it.
So when it comes to, when it comes to the issue of reporting, I do, I do wonder if we've penned, I mean, I, I have agreed and continue to agree that there is such a thing as over-communicating. And, and even I got last year pretty quickly to the point where, you know, I kind of tuned out those, those emails, and I guess some people get them as phone calls. Yeah, I know. I've already, I've already apologized profusely to, to Jason. But, but yeah, I mean, that, that's going to happen. But I think maybe, I, I think if I'm correct, what, what, what I'm hearing from, from Penny is the same thing I'm hearing from a lot of parents. First of all, there's parents out there that still don't know that we're not doing that this year. And I also think that there, there is, there is some information in the middle that we can do. You know, we don't have to send daily updates, but maybe there's a threshold where if there's this many cases this week at your school, maybe we do send, you know, maybe you do get notified. In, in a case like that, I would expect that you would only get notified, maybe, you know, you get notified, it'd be once a week, maybe for one or two weeks at the most.
I think that's reasonable, absolutely.
Yeah. So, so I, I do think that we should revisit that. I don't, you know, I, I see Dr. Bissell back there too, and I, I was going to offer the chair a chance. I mean, I'd like to hear from Dr. Bissell and, and get her updates and, yeah. And I, I'd like to get back to this conversation and, and a bunch of other things related to health too. But I don't, you know, I appreciate her time being here, and, and I don't want to take more than.
And I don't want you to think that what I'm saying is that we can't do more, because we can do more. But we do have some limits as to what we can do. You know, I like your idea of maybe of a certain amount of cases in a week, we do notify a certain school. Something we could do too, we could, we could start again separating, separating out staff and students. That's easy to do. But we still, there is a, there's a certain point where we'd have to be very, very careful in regards to how, how we do the notifications.
And I appreciate also, and I think most parents would appreciate, the idea that, you know, there, there, the word fear has been talked about a lot, and the idea that you, you don't necessarily want to pull your kid electively when there really isn't much more of a risk there. And that's where this kind of gets a little bit dicey, and I, and I get both sides of it. I think from, you know, from the health side, you know, and from an epidemiological side, there are certain situations where, yeah, it makes sense to take those, those steps. And there may be other situations where maybe it's not. But I don't, I, I agree with Penny though, that I think, if anything, I do think we should err on the side of giving people the information. I like the idea of giving them the information with some context. And I, that's some, that's something else that we can bring up and talk about, which we haven't also been doing very much of, at least not on our COVID page. Because, you know, I, I go back and look at the COVID page today, and the last time it was updated was August 4th. It was over a month ago, right? So, you know, parents are looking for that reassurance, and I think some of that reassurance is there. Maybe we're just not giving it to them, so I don't know.
Do we want to hear Dr. Bissell at this point? Maybe she can tie some of this together?
Yes, let's hear Dr. Bissell, please.
Were we going to hear from Brad as well? Did he, was he going to come up and tell us what our, the legal note?
It's up to you guys, if you need him.
He already told us that. I just don't agree with him.
Thank you, Dr. Bissell.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so I have, I do have a bunch of slides. I'll get to a lot of the things you all just discussed. I, you know, I was asked to kind of give an overview, give some perspective. And so that's what I'm going to try and do really quickly. All right, what button, Jason? There we go, okay. Okay, so these are our local epidemiology curves that are done by my epidemiologist, Jason. Every week we do these, and I present them. They're also on our NRV Road to Wellness website. As expected, you can see we are seeing the Delta surge. Last week, or the, the week of the 24th of August, I will tell you that that is artificially up because we got a data dump from one urgent care. We got about two and a half weeks' worth of data. So normally, we try to report by date of onset of symptoms, which is the proper way to do it, or date of positive test. This was a data dump, so a lot of those cases that take it up towards 500, and, and this is the entire district, okay? This is not Montgomery County. This is the entire district. Some of those cases should be on the 17th and the 10th. And you'd see the curve rise up more than kind of plateau and, and then go up. So this is Montgomery County, same thing. That 220, that's a data dump. A lot of those that are flat before it should actually be a little bit higher, so you'd see a stair step up. The one on the far right is definitely going to fill in. We, we saw our surge last week. You know, we, we really did hit our peak. We expect that those cases will fill in. And just going through, Radford City, Floyd County, same thing, that week of the, the 24th, you see that we got a data dump, and it kind of artificially makes the cases look higher. There's Giles, here's Pulaski. This is our school-aged children. This is district-wide. You can see it does that stair step up as we expected with Delta at the peak of about 80 the week of the 27th. And obviously, those numbers are going to go up on that, they're going to fill in on that far right. So 80 cases, that's out of 20,000 public school students. So that comes out to a rate of 0.4%. Most of our schools have been in school for about three or four weeks now. That, that's not actually a really high number. People tend to look at these numbers, but 0.4% is not a, a really high number in our schools. This is our community versus college versus school-aged kids. As you can see, the yellow is our community, by and large, still the predominant source of our cases. Our college students, very, very small. This time last year, our college was much, much higher, but most of our college kids are vaccinated. And you can see our school-aged children down the bottom in the blue-gray. This is the curve for Virginia. You'll see, and, and I will say that on the far right, if you notice, there, there are these valleys, and that's weekend reporting. Weekend reporting tends to lag a little bit, so you'll see those valleys. You'll see that the three days lagged over the Labor Day weekend. We do expect to see numbers go back up, but we really do expect that we've hit our peak and, and that we are either going to plateau a little bit or start coming back down. This is Montgomery County, and the reason I put this in here is there are people who follow this data, and I get emails and calls every single day. How in the world did you have negative 40 or negative 30 cases? So people have to understand that the reporting of cases is, you know, what happened on those cases is they got reported by zip code. Well, zip codes cross county lines. And so they got, they got assigned to Montgomery County, and then someone going back and cleaning up the data realized, oh, that's not a Montgomery County address, that's a Floyd County address, or that's a Pulaski County address. So Montgomery County lost all of those cases, and all of our other districts gained those cases. And so I got a panicked call from Radford City Council, oh my gosh, we have an outbreak, 47 cases in one day. And, and that's just, that's, that's not what it is. So you have to be really careful when you look at these day-to-day. And this is again, you know, th, those negative cases should have actually been put on the curve, the date that they actually became a case. They're historical cases. These are cases that are no longer even active. I bring these up because I do want to show you, this is the Delta variant pattern. If you look on the left, India's where the Delta variant started. You'll see that it spiked up, and it came down, and you'll see that the deaths were in parallel. And the reason is because India hadn't seen any cases, and they hadn't started vaccinating. On the other side, you see the United Kingdom. They had started vaccinating, and they had already had the Alpha variant, the B117, that started in the United Kingdom. So their cases went up, but their deaths did not go up. If you notice, they started coming down really nicely, and then they've sort of plateaued. If you put that on the dateline, the calendar, that's about when they basically decided that this is now endemic, it's not pandemic, and all restrictions went away. They're not masking, they're not, they're not doing anything. So there's no layered mitigation. People are back to normal social activity, and with the Delta variant, you're going to see the spread. I bring up Australia and New Zealand as an example, that lockdowns don't work. They just kind of kick the can down the road. Australia, you can see, they had lockdowns, so they didn't have cases, they didn't have cases. And then over on the right is, is their Delta surge. Same thing with New Zealand, over there on the right. And, and they're going for zero COVID, and, and that's not realistic. You know, it's certainly not realistic for us. It's not even realistic for two islands that are, you know, much smaller and obviously have closed borders. These are the countries in Europe that have seen their Delta curve. You can see Spain. They've had their Delta curve go up and come down. And, and the characteristic pattern is, it goes up over, on average, about a six-week period, give or take a couple of weeks, and then it comes back down. And that's just the epidemiology. That's just what happens with a highly transmissible virus. Here's France, here's Germany, they're kind of hitting their peak right now. Again, the people that have vaccinated and the people that have had previous surges, when you have infection, you have immunity conferred. Natural infection does confer, confer immunity. Here's Sweden. The reason I put that in there is everyone talked about Sweden early on. They pretty much adopted an open policy. I don't know if y'all followed that, but they really didn't do a lot of restrictions. They, they went through the concept of herd immunity. And they acknowledged that what they got wrong was they didn't protect their most vulnerable, their older folks. And so, you know, in, in that policy, they did have a pretty high incidence of death. But because they had so much infection, they really haven't seen anything with the Delta surge. And they are vaccinating as well. So this is the United States curve. Over on the right, you can see, we are pretty much at, as a country, at a plateau right now. We, we've kind of hit that peak up there, and we do expect it. If you, if you measure it out, it's about a six-week period, and, and it's going to start going back down. This is Florida. Everyone talked, you know, Florida has had really, really bad issues, right? They're coming down. You go to Louisiana, same thing. You go to Mississippi. And these are all the ones in the news. You know, the cases are coming down. You go to Georgia, they're right there. North Carolina, they had a data lag, because you can see on one or two days there, they had no cases reported, but, but they're kind of coming back up there. South Carolina, Tennessee, right to our south. And we get a lot of, you know, we have a lot of border crossings with Tennessee. And I actually now cover all of southwest Virginia, so I'm following what's happening in Tennessee very closely. This is your MCPS dashboard. It counts cumulative cases, so those numbers are only going to go up. And my slide doesn't divide it. You do have a color division where you have prior positive tests and current positive tests. But we got lots of panic calls about Christiansburg Middle School. You know, so a lot of those cases were actually historical cases where people didn't even start school on time because it was a teacher or student who'd already been positive, and, and they hadn't even come into school, yet they were reported on this dashboard. So if you look at our actual number of active cases in Christiansburg Middle School, we get one or two a day, and that's out of 800-plus students and staff, which is a very, very small percentage. And, and again, we are going to have cases in our schools. We're going to have cases in our schools. So that's not a huge percentage. And if we were having an out, an outbreak, we would see more than just one or two cases a day. We would see a lot more cases a day with an outbreak. We talk about testing. This is just from a Mayo Clinic study on, on masking, and I know we worry about three feet, six feet. I'll, I'll tell you, there's actually no science to three feet or six feet. And in public health, traditionally, we use one arms length, which is, which is three feet. So going the six feet was a change, and, and there was no science behind that. But Mayo Clinic did do a study with masking, and if you look at the very bottom, where both your source and your target are masked, there really is no difference in transmission, one foot, three foot, or six foot, with both people wearing a mask. It's less than 0.5%. So let me just go back and, and address a couple of things. Quarantine. So we are, in general, during this pandemic, people have been way over-selected for quarantine. And the reason we don't put those numbers out there is, they don't tell you anything, and, and they don't, how do they make someone feel safer? Because I'll tell you, the whole purpose of quarantine is really that, that you feel that someone is at a high enough risk of becoming positive that, that you really think they need, they need to separate. Well, when you're quarantining an entire class, an entire bus, you know, whatever, and you have one positive out of that, that is way over-selecting for quarantine. We all know COVID's around. We all know that, that we have a risk of getting COVID in everything we do. And, and I'm a parent too. I have a kid who's playing sports. I have a kid who's doing other things. I'm out doing other things. There's a risk everywhere we go, and, and we have to accept that. You know, I got a lot of questions about the Virginia Tech football game, right? That is a calculated risk, you know, people have to make. You know, i, if you're higher risk, you, you choose not to go. So when we, when we look at quarantining people, our kids are doing other activities, and, and they're not quarantining people from all these other activities either. So from a public health standpoint, when we look at what we do with communicable diseases, we don't report out quarantines, because i, in general, it, it doesn't contribute to making anything safer for anybody, which is what our ultimate goal is from public health. What we are seeing is by far 90-plus, 95-plus percent transmission is in the household or in social activities. It is not in the schools. And this is where, where the questions come in, you know, about transparency, about data, you know, putting out those numbers. When we find a case, you know, and I can tell you, I now cover 21 localities. So I can tell you, I have a lot of data on positive cases in our elementary schools, in our middle schools, in our high schools. And the transmission in the classroom i, is really rare compared to where there's transmission elsewhere. So if I have a positive case in that classroom, it is really premature to not let my staff do the investigation and, and do the contact tracing, and start bloating out there that, you know, your school has positive cases, your classroom has positive cases, or whatever, when it's not going to make any difference. It really isn't. Because even, and, and I absolutely agree with the symptomatic challenge. And, and Jason, you guys have the most challenging job right now, by far, and, and we do. We are talking to Jason regularly, we are talking to all of our schools regularly. And you will have physicians who will say, you know, this child doesn't need to, to stay out of school. They can come back to school. And then you'll have physicians saying, you really ought to keep this child out of school. And it is really challenging. And absolutely, testing someone who's symptomatic makes a lot of sense. And I know, you know, you're looking at getting the testing through Viden, you're looking at doing the testing through Vista. We have testing through the health department. And, and that's, you know, we have testing options through the health department. We have PCR testing that we get back the next day, which is pretty good. There are lots of testing options out there. People can buy over-the-counter tests. People can go to Walgreens, people can go to CVS. Pediatrician's offices are doing it. You know, we're doing it. So there are testing options out there. And we want to make testing accessible, absolutely, anybody who's symptomatic. Because if anybody read the story about the, the Los Angeles teacher, right, who was unvaccinated and transmitted in the classroom, she thought she had typical allergies. And that's one of the, the hardest things right now, is these symptoms are all over the place. I mean, they can be stomach symptoms, they can be headaches, they can be fatigue, you know. So really, anybody who's not feeling up to, to speed, if they're not feeling normal and they have symptoms, it's, it's easy to go ahead and, and get a test. And we have, we can't stress enough. And I'll tell you, a lot of the tracing that we're doing is exactly that. People came, and, and not just schools, but tracing in other, other places, is people came in because they thought it was just allergies, or that they, you know, they didn't think much of it. And then we find out that, that yes, they're COVID-positive. I will say, you know, testing, it, it would be wonderful if we had a perfect test. It would be wonderful if every time I did that test, I knew that a positive test was an absolute positive case, and every time I did that test, a negative test was a negative case. Nothing is perfect. And that's what this talks about, and that's one of the things that we're trying to work with all of our school systems on the, the testing program. The initial presentation was for just widespread, broad screening testing. You can't look at a test efficacy without looking at your disease prevalence. So if you're doing broad screening testing and you aren't considering what your disease prevalence is, you could literally have a positive test that the validity of that test is like flipping a coin. And when you're making decisions and you're implementing policy based on that data, you have to use your disease prevalence. You have to be, you know, relatively sure that that test is a valid positive test, or on the, on the flip side, a valid negative test. And, and so you calculate it with, we know the sensitivity, we know the specificity of the tests. We know our disease prevalence because we have a pretty wide base of, of testing available for people to do surveillance. They can get tested, like I said, through doctors' offices, pharmacies, health department. We do mobile outreach. There's lots of ways to get tested. So you have to look at your test efficacy before you start implementing a lot of widespread screening. You know, I, I do understand that it, it's really concerning. Y'all talked about outbreaks. I do want to address outbreaks. The VDH criteria of an outbreak, and this is the minimum criteria, it's not an absolute, is two or more cases from different households with shared or common exposure, and no more likely source of infection, i.e. household or community activity. The occurrence should be unusual and clearly above what is expected. Again, that goes back to our zero COVID. We're not going to. Again, that goes back to our zero COVID. We're not going to see zero COVID. We are going to see cases in the schools. The other thing is to factor on ongoing transmission versus whether the school and public health intervention have limited the public health risk. If the public health risk has been limited, then that doesn't necessarily need to be classified as an outbreak. The Council for State and Territorial Epidemiologists recognizes, you know, that public reporting should be balanced between privacy, and you're absolutely right, Dr. Meyer. If you have one case in a school, in a classroom, and you report that, you have automatically given information about that child. And I can't do that. I am bound by HIPAA, and you're absolutely right. People on social media will get it out there, and in fact, you know, I'll have people send me an email with names and dates and information and stuff. And if they send it to me, that's fine. But then if I need to send that email to my staff, I need to encrypt it and make it secure. I can't just forward that email to my staff. So we are bound by a level of privacy and confidentiality that social media certainly isn't. And we really do have to consider that. You know, and CSTE, the Council for State and Territorial Epidemiologists, they specifically say that public reporting of outbreaks of significant size or risk to the public should be prioritized, not necessarily one or two. You know, you have to look at the priority there. I will say, again, you know, when we look at this, if you have multiple students that have contact in school, that's not necessarily where they got it. And kids tend to hang together both in-school and out-school. If they're on sports teams, if they're on clubs, you know, if they go to the same school, if they live in the same neighborhood, they tend to hang together. And so if the most likely source that those multiple kids got infected was a social activity or an outside activity, and we all know that all during this pandemic, kids didn't stop socializing. They did birthday parties. They did social events. If the most likely source of all of those kids turning positive was something outside of school, it is not a school outbreak. Just because multiple kids from one class or one team or one event, if the most likely source is outside of school, it's not a school outbreak. So that's the definitions. You know, again, when we talk about thresholds for going remote, we all talk about all of the negative consequences of not being in person. And, you know, we don't have to go through the food insecurity, the domestic violence, the anxiety, the depression, the increased suicide rates, the STIs, the lost learning, the loss from school. Several of my districts have just, kids have fallen off the radar, and they can't even get them back in. They can't even get them back in. So the negative consequences of remote, and then I go back and I say, last year, when we had in-person hybrid and we had remote, we had just as many cases in kids who were remote as we did in-person. And that's because the remote kids were still doing other activities. So again, you know, there is no zero COVID, and we have to have a very balanced approach here. We have to have a very reasonable approach here. Yes, this is serious, but we aren't going to get to zero COVID. And, you know, I read an article recently, which couldn't be more true. We have such a polarized society, and we are all about the absolutes on the extremes. It's either black or white, when everything really is that gray in the middle. And it's been really challenging, as you all know, as we know, being in the public eye, because that person who is totally fearful of this thinks that everything needs to be locked down, and you can't do anything, and why are these people doing this? And anybody who doesn't feel the way I do is wrong. And then you have that person, and we still do have a lot of people who still feel this is a political hoax. You know, why are you all doing all these things? And we all know that there is a balance there, and that's what that layered mitigation is. So when we talk about layered mitigation, you know, the masking, I showed you that study. The masking really does work on buses. There's a study from a private school that having two to a seat, not skipping rows, with everyone masked and the windows down, and I, every time I drive and I see those Montgomery County buses, I look to make sure those windows are down.
[laughter]
Every time, I look to see those windows down, and they had no transmission. They had positive cases, but they had no transmission. So that's the science when we talk about following the science. The ventilation works. In your classrooms, you've all upped the ventilation as best you can. You've improved the air exchanges. You've done the HEPA filters. So you're doing the best you can. I know that the masking compliance is challenging, and I know that the teachers, I fully get that they don't want to sit there and be the police for the mask. I don't want to be the vaccine police. I get that. But it really makes a difference if they wear a mask properly when they're inside. And one of the most challenging things has been that we lost sight of what was really important. And I'll say this was the CDC, too. Masking outside, there is incredibly rare transmission outside, right? We should have really focused in on what we knew mattered, and that's the masking inside. You know, the surface contamination and your deep cleaning and your Ghostbuster suits. We knew a long time ago that that wasn't necessary, that we were not getting surface transmission, but it took months and months and months to acknowledge that. You know, so when you've got such a divided group of people, if you're trying to get that buy-in, if you really make it matter, the stuff that we know really matters, that's where it really counts. That's what's going to make the difference. Vaccines, right? We are still trying to get everybody 12 and up vaccinated. And, you know, Mr. Jabaka, I know, talks a lot about how can we get more people to get vaccinated. It's been a huge challenge, again, because, you know, we have the people who were first in line and wanted to be vaccinated right away, and then we've got the people who no way, no how, you're not going to stick that stuff in me. And the best we can do is meet people where they are. I need their trust. I need them to cooperate with me. I can't be judgmental. You know, in public health, that's the way it is. They don't always take my advice. They don't always follow our guidance, but we need to meet them where they are. And so the best we can do is we try and educate. We try and, you know, dispel any myths that are out there, and we get some people, and some people we don't. We are prepared, and we continue to offer vaccination. As Mr. Garretson said, we're coming into the schools. I'm very hopeful it's going to be right around there that they start approving it for five to 11 years old, or authorizing it. It's not going to be approved, but authorized for five to 11-year-olds. And, you know, the day that it is, we will offer it to those five to 11-year-olds, along with the flu vaccine. And we're working with our pediatrician's offices. We're working with our FQHC. We're working with our pharmacies to make sure that we distribute vaccine every week to all of our community partners to make sure that that vaccine is out there. But that's part of that layered mitigation strategy. And the vaccines have turned this into a preventable communicable disease, not unlike a lot of other communicable diseases that we deal with all the time. And that's really where we're heading with COVID, and that's where we need to be. We need to accept that we aren't going to get to zero COVID anywhere, and certainly not in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Bissell. Does anyone have any questions for her?
Dr. Bissell, what are your thoughts on mandatory vaccination for staff?
So I think in a congregate setting like a school, that vaccine mandates are a part of a strategy to use. I endorsed vaccine mandates for our college kids, and got a lot of people who hated me for that, and I got a lot of nasty grams. But the fact of the matter is, you have a higher-risk congregate setting where you could see things, you know, outbreaks happen. We know the vaccines are safe. We know they're effective. I mean, these are the most scrutinized drugs that we have ever seen, as far as hundreds of millions of doses have been given. So I do support in those situations that you need to have a mandate for the vaccine. We know that our younger children who can't yet be vaccinated, the cases in those children are the ones that the adults around them are not vaccinated. So I think it's important to protect everyone. And, you know, we've kind of gotten away with, with our rights comes some societal responsibilities. And I understand that people, it's a different type of vaccine. I also understand that social media has just done a terrible disservice with spreading so much misinformation, and it's been challenging. But I do support it to make our schools safer.
I have a question, then, to springboard off of that. At what point do you see either the state or localities, I guess, add this vaccination to their list of all the other immunizations that we do?
For kids?
We've been reluctant to do it so far, of course, because we were under emergency use. And now I feel like we're kind of in a, I don't want to say a weird spot, but we're in a unique situation where there's really only one of, you know, potentially three or more immunizations that have been FDA-approved, so...
Do you mean for children?
Yeah, for students.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, obviously, we've done it at the university setting, but they're older, so...
Right, so they're adults. For students, it actually would require the General Assembly to pass legislation making it mandatory, just like they did last year. They added hepatitis A and meningitis. So it would require General Assembly order. For staff, as an employer, you have more latitude. You're right, the Pfizer vaccine has been fully approved by the FDA. The Moderna has approved, or has applied for full authorization. That's expected to come within the next month or six weeks. I don't know, Johnson &amp; Johnson has said that they're going to finish their data within the next month or two and then apply for full authorization. But we do expect Moderna within the next month or six weeks. And then we do expect authorization for the five to 11-year-olds right around the October, November timeframe.
Okay.
So I think it's important. I know we're in a surge right now, but the Epi-curve show us that, looking forward, we're going to start seeing our cases come down. You know, we may have, again, people asked about the football game. I don't think the football game is going to give us a significant impact. We really don't. The students were vaccinated. We were there offering vaccines. Most people who were going in said that they were vaccinated already. Were they lying to us? People lie to us in public health all the time. You know, and we are relying on people, to be honest, and to do the right thing, and if they're sick, stay home. Not all of them. Well, we know that. But those are all mitigation strategies. It was outdoors. I know that they're all yelling and screaming. But last year, some of our football games, college football games, were pretty packed stadiums, and we didn't see huge outbreaks from that. And that was even prior to vaccine. So outdoors makes a big difference. It really does.
I don't want to hog the time if other people have questions, but I got a couple more questions. So I think, for me, one of the things that we deal with, and, you know, Penny had brought this stuff up, and I think I understand some of what you're saying is scientific. It comes from kind of a, you know, 3,000-foot-level public health policy type of view, and I can see that, and I can agree with it. At the same time, you know, what we do, you know, at the school board, sometimes we're often dealing just with individual kids or small groups of kids. And, you know, I mean, the extent that we, you know, bend over backwards for, you know, essentially the least of these is pretty incredible, and I'm proud of that. And so, you know, sometimes those two things don't necessarily totally line up, and sometimes, you know, that will get, you know, we may want to take a path that may be a little bit more cautious, even if we don't, you know, absolutely have to from a high-level public health point of view, right? Because if it's your kid that gets, you know, I know it's extremely low chance, but if it's your kid that gets, you know, COVID, ends up in the hospital or something like that, you know, that's when we're going to hear about it, and then, of course, we don't want to do that. But with that in mind, I mean, can we talk a little bit about the notification and the tracing? Because I keep hearing, you know, I hear things from our staff about how things are happening, and then, of course, I hear things from the public, as you can imagine. Is that something you can talk to a little bit about? I mean, people have talked about there being a potential delay from the time that you have, you know, a supposed outbreak or one or two or three cases in a classroom versus finding out, or that, you know, I've heard things that the Health Department's, you know, understaffed, and they can't get the stuff. And so, could you talk to any of those misconceptions or...
So for us to actually know about a case, we have to know about a case to start the interview process and the contact tracing and the case investigation. People that get tested at CVS, you know, just like I showed you, we got, literally, one of our urgent cares gave us a data dump that was 10 to 14 days old. So we didn't know about those cases. So if we don't know about it, we can't do anything. And I would encourage people, if you get tested elsewhere and you're positive, you need to call the Health Department and let us know. You know, our testing, we get our testing back that we send the next day, and it automatically comes to us. Stuff that goes to LabCorp, that goes to a lot of the commercial labs, is electronically reported to us. However, if there's a data entry error, it might not come to us. So if LabCorp enters a ZIP code wrong, instead of, you know, what's it, 24060, they enter 24960, it goes to 24960, and there can be a delay for us to get it. So we have to know about the case to investigate it. It always starts with the patient. And, you know, you have to remember, contact tracing and case investigation is not new. This is something we do in public health all the time, but it sort of became sexy during the pandemic, right? Oh, my gosh, do they have enough? We have enough staff. We've hired more than enough staff. You know, we do what is appropriate for the investigation, which is to start with the patient and find out what's going on. If it is a student in the school, we'll speak to the teacher. We'll find out about compliance, because the CDC guidance is if that masking on both ends, if there is compliance, there's not a close contact. That is the new CDC guidance. You know, we'll ask if the student rode the bus, if there was masking on the bus. We follow up. The case, some of the stuff you're talking about, you know, we definitely talk to the teachers. Is this a student who is compliant with masking? Is this a student who's not compliant with masking? Is this a student who was symptomatic, not symptomatic? Are there other people in the household? We always start with the case. And, you know, the problem is, the whole class, in most situations, is not going to be a close contact if all the precautions are followed. In situations where you don't have all the precautions followed, then you will have more exposure, and you will end up quarantining more people. You know, you had the discussion earlier about would we ever, like, close the entire school or the entire district? You know, that would be incredibly unlikely. You know, you're going to start with the class. I mean, if you have to go to school, I can't see, unless we just had a flood of cases all at once, that we would recommend that the entire district go remote. I think that would be incredibly unlikely. But what we find is, as people get more nervous and anxious about it, they think their contacts, when they walked past that classroom door, or when they weren't even in the classroom, they were in the school. And those are not close contacts. And yet, there's a lot of people that think they are. So it always starts with the positive case. We can't investigate until we know about the case. And I agree with you. Social media, it runs rampant. But again, speaking to the situation, one case in a classroom, or even two cases in a classroom, if they're not connected, there's, you know, you have to investigate those cases. Because again, in most situations, those cases were acquired at home. It wasn't transmitted in the classroom. They were acquired at home or in a social situation. It wasn't transmitted in the classroom. And so we're not going to quarantine the entire class.
What do you see as the, I mean, is there an end game for this? And you were talking about the Epi-curves and that you expect things to come down. I mean, at that point, you know, where do we, where do we end up with this thing from your point of view right now? Are we just, are we going to live with it for the next year? Are we going to live with it until, you know, the General Assembly, you know, passes the, you know, the rules to just treat this like any other communicable disease that we've dealt with in the past?
Yeah, COVID's not going to go away. It's going to be here, just like flu, just like a lot of other communicable diseases. There will be different variants. There will be different strains. It will be what we call endemic. We'll transition from pandemic to endemic. There will be cases. We have a vaccine that is very effective in preventing it, and as soon as we get that vaccine authorized for our younger children, then we'll be able to make that transition more easily. And it's not unlike everyone does with every other vaccine and every other situation. They have to do a risk assessment. The General Assembly is going to have to look at the numbers and decide, are they going to put that in with the mandatory vaccinations for school-aged children? That would have to come in the next legislative session, or they'd have to call a special legislative session. When we get to that point, natural immunity from infection actually confers very robust immunity, and the latest data, the ongoing data, really suggests that it's long-term immunity, probably even a little bit better than the vaccine. So when you get to the point that you've had enough cases and enough people vaccinated, your pool of susceptible hosts goes down enough that you're not going to see these big spikes. You're going to see these waves that ebb and flow. You're gonna see these waves that ebb and flow, and, and that's where we'll be endemic. That's where we kinda cross that threshold from pandemic into endemic. I do expect, though, my bet is next year, when you get your flu shot, you'll get your flu and your COVID shot. And they're already doing, they're gonna start clinical trials this fall on a combined flu-COVID booster. You've all heard about boosters. So I do expect that it will be something that, and, and we have to look at success, too. You know, from a public health standpoint, when we talk about success of a vaccine, we're looking, and we, we've done this for years with the flu vaccine. It may not prevent you from getting the flu, but if it keeps you out of the hospital, it keeps you from dying, that's a public health success. And the data on these vaccines overwhelmingly, it is still doing exactly that. And yeah, you hear about breakthrough cases. You hear that, you know, people who might get sick with breakthrough cases, but those numbers are incredibly low. And we're looking population-based. We're looking tens of thousands, millions in our numbers. Very, very rare. And, and the incidence of hospitalizations and deaths, VDH puts the data out, VHHA, it's overwhelmingly, that it's unvaccinated people who end up hospitalized and, and are accounting for most of the deaths right now.
Any other questions for Dr. Bissell?
Yeah, so I, I have one. You mentioned the distancing, and that three feet or six feet, that it really didn't make that much of a difference?
So this, this is from the Mayo Clinic. And if you look, the yellow is when there are no masks being worn. And you can see that with no masks, at a hun, at, at one foot, there's a hundred percent transmission. At three feet, seventy percent, at six feet, three percent. And then, if you look at the source person, so the person who has COVID being masked, it really decreases that transmission, whether it's a disposable mask, which is the orange, or a fabric homemade mask, which is the blue, all across the board, it really decreases. If the target, which is the person who's susceptible, who's not infected, is masked, but the source person who has COVID is not masked, there is more transmission. And we said that from the get-go, right? You know, if you have that barrier, someone's not streaming COVID out. So you do see transmission, more transmission, if the source is not masked, but the target is. But this bottom line, if both are masked, at one feet, one foot, there's less than point five percent. At three foot, and at six foot distance, there's less than point five transmission. So that, you know, obviously having both people masked, the, the distance is less important. And that bears out on the study on the school bus I told you about. The kids were sitting two to a seat, every row. They, they had masks on, and, and they, you know, the bus driver was making sure that they were wearing their masks, and then they had the windows down from through ventilation. So again, it's that layered mitigation. We know ventilation makes a huge difference.
So, there're big con, there's a big concern that during lunches, when students have their masks off, and the level of transmission goes up, so what, where are we at with that?
So right now, I can tell you, we have not had a cafeteria outbreak incident. Again, it goes back to people doing the right thing. If you're symptomatic, stay home, because if you're symptomatic, you're at higher risk of transmitting than somebody who's not symptomatic. Even if they're COVID positive and they're not symptomatic, they're at lower risk of transmitting. A lot depends on, you know, are they facing each other? Are they yelling and screaming? You know, I know the, the encouragement is to go ahead and eat, and then put your mask back on to socialize. I think that's a really good thing, right? Go ahead and eat, not, you know, try to minimize any socialization, and then as soon as you put your mask back on, you can socialize, and that'll help. But so far, you know, lunchrooms have not been in any of our districts. Have not been a huge problem. I think most of them are trying to offer outdoor options. I know you have the tents and stuff. I, I know my daughter goes to Blackford, and, and people go up into the hallway. They get the cafeteria. They go out to the, um, the tent area. They go out to the other areas outside where they can sit outside of the tent, and obviously, that's quite a dependent. But I think, at, at least at, at that school, they do have options. And I've seen the tents up at other schools as well, take advantage of outdoor while we can. And I do expect that, you know, by October, we'll be looking at very different numbers.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may, I just had one other question about testing, because that's come up quite a bit, and, and you had a good slide on there and that equation that you showed. So if the prevalence, I mean, basically what that equation is showing is that if the prevalence of the disease is too low in your sample, in your community, then you're not gonna get very meaningful information from doing random testing? Is that, is that what these equations are telling us?
Doing random or, like, screening testing, right?
Screening testing, yes. But as far as symptomatic testing, that's a different, that's a different story, right?
Symptomatic, absolutely. And I'll say that the, um, the rapid antigen tests are very reliable symptomatic. And I know a lot of testing protocols say if you get a, you know, if you get a positive antigen, go ahead and confirm it with PCR. We don't do that in most cases, because if you have symptoms and you have a positive antigen test, you have COVID. And we just declare it a case, and, you know, we do the appropriate, we have to isolate for ten days from the onset of symptoms from the positive test.
What, what is roughly the, I mean, I don't, I don't even know that prevalence variable in that equation. I mean, what, what are we, what are you looking for as far as level in a community for it to, to make any sense? Are, are we still way below what, what makes sense?
Yes, we are. Actually, our prevalence right now is probably about one percent, maybe a half percent. To not have a positive test, the validity be the flip of a coin, you really have to have a prevalence at least five percent or more.
Okay.
And we've never been that high. You know, I'll tell you, we've never hit five percent in the community, which is why, you know, the test is only as good a, as what we have. And we don't wanna make decisions based on invalid results.
Sure.
So symptomatic people, absolutely, antigen or PCR. Now, PCR test, right, that has its own thing. It's, it's very sensitive, and in fact, the CDC is retiring the PCR test because it's almost too sensitive.
Right.
It stays positive, and I know the CDC says three months. We have people that we really are following that has stayed positive far longer than that. It's not, they don't have any evidence that they had a new infection or infection. So again, it can stay positive for a really long time. The other thing with, you know, vaccinated people, it'd be really nice if the vaccine put up this, this shield that you can't get exposed to the virus, but that's not what happens. So if you're a vaccinated person, and you get exposed to the virus, you're gonna have virus in your nose, and we know it's at a pretty high level. We've seen that now. If you get a PCR test, the PCR test is gonna be positive, but your, your immune system hasn't kicked in yet. So you don't know if your immune system is gonna fight that infection off or not. And, you know, that PCR test can pick up for weeks down the road. Somebody really never showed active infection, but had fragments of RNA still in their, in their nasal passage, and that PCR test was positive. And, and so that's where, when you do a case investigation, you look at your data, you know, you look at the history, you look at the, the individual story, you look at your test results, you look at symptoms, you look at exposures, you look at risks. It's all, again, looking at that risk and taking the data you have, and really trying to make the story together that fits with what you're seeing.
So, so when, when people talk about the, you know, the, the three legs of the stool, I guess, of, of, you know, mitigation, right? And one of those is testing, and I don't know if that comes from the CDC, or if that comes from the VDOE, I'm not sure. But i- is, i- does that need to come with an asterisk that says, is, is that testing, you're talking about screening testing? Or is that testing talking about symptomatic testing, or does that need to come with an asterisk that says if your prevalence is five percent or greater?
Well, that's part of the problem that, you know, CDC doesn't really define, they don't discuss prevalence in their recommendations. There are a lot of epidemiologists, in fact, the University of Minnesota, they, they have a smart testing protocol, where you do consider these other factors, and you don't just do an overhaul of just testing everybody on a regular schedule. So when they first presented that Vista testing, that, um, they talked about, you know, in order to qualify, you had to sign up for pooled PCR testing, which means they take four or five samples from people, and they run that as one. If it's negative, you assume they're all negative. If it's positive, you have to retest all four or five individuals. So you have to swab them again individually to see who that positive person is.
Sure.
So they talked about doing a ten percent, you know, basically per school, ten percent per week, where you do just screening testing. And if your disease prevalence is one and a half percent, it is worse than a point one, that those positive tests are true positive tests. And so then you're making decisions about quarantining. You're making decisions about transition to remote, and that's not good data. And that's exactly what Hall Offit and the folks in Minnesota, you know, they, they've come out and say, you have to implement smart testing, not just test, test, test.
Sure.
And, and symptomatic is always, symptomatic testing is always wanted. Because we have seen a lot of cases where people assume it's just allergies, or they assume it was because they inhaled smoke or whatever, and then they were positive. So, yeah, we encourage, and, you know, the other thing with home testing, and I've seen this in my other districts, is people don't disclose, right? You give them a home test, and, um, we actually, through another partnership, we went to Floyd Fest, and we went to some big events, and we handed out thousands of home tests. And said, please test yourself, scan it on your phone, and you can report your results. And our reporting back has been minimal, and, and we certainly haven't gotten positives reported. People aren't telling us if they're positive. But one of the VDOE options that they're looking at, if you do the, the program, is a home monitored telemedicine test, where they take the test, and they're monitored by telemedicine. Obviously, if your student or your family or your faculty have good internet at home, that works. If they don't, then that's not gonna work that well. You have to do it where they have internet access to do it. And, and it's only as good as the sample you take, right? So you could wave the swab in front of your nose and get a negative test.
Yeah, sure.
And you don't know that if you do a test at home. And, and the problem is, unfortunately, people do manipulate. But I will say, people have manipulated this entire pandemic.
Yes.
And what we have found is that the people who are gonna do the right thing are gonna do the right thing. The people who aren't gonna do the right thing, unfortunately, don't. And, and we get through it. We, we get through.
So on the, on the testing, so, because the symptomatic testing, you mentioned something about your, your team having the one-day turnaround. But I also know, you know, my, my wife is a, a professor at, at Tech. She's got some students who are in situations where they're showing symptoms, they're probably not COVID, but, you know, and they're trying to get testing, and it's, it seems that there's a, a dearth of testing right now, at least something quick. You know, people have to wait two, three, four days maybe to get an appointment or something.
Fraylin?
Is that news? Okay, you're looking at me like that's news to you, so, okay.
No, we, Fraylin is the one that runs our test, and they're up in Rocco. We send tests up five days a week, Monday to Thursday. We send them up at five fifteen in the afternoon. On Friday, we send them up at twelve thirty. And Monday to Thursday, we have the results back usually the next afternoon. So if I send it up on Wednesday on the courier, I get it back Thursday afternoon. If I send it by twelve thirty on Friday, I get it Friday afternoon or evening.
But there's, there's appointments for getting the tests, right, taken?
You get it at health departments. You can walk in, get tested every day.
You can just walk in and, anytime, okay, alright.
It's a self-swab test on Mondays and Thursdays. We're at the government health department. On Tuesdays, we're at Floyd. On Wednesdays, Klaske, and Fridays, Bradford.
Okay, thanks.
So it, it is readily available. You don't have a shortage of test kits. I mean, you can easily get, and we can also, Fraylin does also offer saliva testing. And, and I'll say, we thought that was really gonna be a huge thing with the Virginia Tech students last year, but you need to produce a, a good amount of saliva. And a lot of people found that producing that much saliva was challenging, and they'd rather have the nasal swab. Kids who wanna spit and have a contest might even have fun doing this. But there is an option to do saliva testing as well in Fraylin. And that's all PCR. That's not antigen testing.
So a question? A question about quarantine. So folks who have been vaccinated versus have not been. I have a situation where a student tested positive, and a coworker, the parent, was sent home to quarantine for, like, fourteen days, but the student is back in school.
So someone who's vaccinated does not need to quarantine?
Excuse me, Dr. Bissell. Somebody sent me a, a note that people online can't hear you talking, and asking if you could speak in front of the mic. Sorry, thanks.
So if, if somebody is vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine. They're asked to wear a mask whenever they're around people or in public places, and they're asked to monitor for symptoms for three to five days. In those three to five days, they can get tested, and we found that if they're, they're not positive, then it's unlikely that they're gonna be positive, but we still do ask that they continue to monitor for symptoms, and, you know, that they continue to wear a mask when they're around public people, or in public, around people, for up to fourteen days. Someone who is not vaccinated, and this kinda goes back to not letting perfect be the enemy of good, we know that fourteen days is the ideal situation, that if you quarantine fourteen days and you go out on day fifteen, there is a zero percent chance that you are going to have COVID and give it to somebody else. The problem is, people don't comply with fourteen days. We found this all throughout last year. They don't comply with fourteen days. And the CDC found that, and that's why they shortened it to ten days. And they said, at ten days, we find that you might miss one percent. So ninety-nine percent chance at ten days, and they release on day eleven, that you're, you're not gonna miss COVID. So ninety-nine percent in statistics is pretty good, pretty good odds. The seven-day test-out option, again, you know, people just not complying and trying to find that sweet spot. If you quarantine seven days, if you get a negative test between day five and day seven, it runs between five and twelve percent that you might miss. So it's eighty-eight to ninety-five percent that you're not gonna miss a, a COVID positive. And that's for anybody who's unvaccinated or partially vaccinated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Bissell. You gave us more than what we were asking for, definitely. So thank you so much for educating us.
I think in a month, we'll be in a much better place. You'll see those numbers down. We'll be in a much better place if we can hang in there.
Would the board like to take a quick break before we finish up here? Maybe five-minute break? Ten minutes, five minutes, ten minutes? Let's say ten minutes. Alright, five minutes. The topic is up there on the board. Um, do we have a majority of the board that wish to make changes for communication of COVID notices or the dashboard?
I mean, do you want roll call or you want, what do you want?
That's a broad question.
Yeah.
I, I, I think what, uh, Mr. Chabak has suggested too, that I think the weekly update, I feel like maybe that's a good idea, we can, and if we can separate it to staff and students, I think that's probably a good, good way of starting. Not give, you know.
I can support that.
So weekly update per school.
Yeah.
Separate the staff, student.
Right.
And this is an email that goes to the families?
I, I thought, can we talk about that notification? I, because I don't know. I, I was always under the impression that as a parent, like I've signed up for, I've signed up for stuff, I think, via email, right? But I thought you can sign up via email, via text, or via phone.
You can't do the text.
Yeah, I guess we don't do text anymore.
Brenda can give us the, she's the expert in how this thing works.
Well, also, just a couple of people mentioned to me that, um, just because when they, you call and no one ans, if they get a voicemail message, they, they just read the transcript of the voicemail message. So people might not be answering their phones. I mean, you're saying that there's a lot of people not answering the phones. I don't answer my phone, but.
Go ahead, Brenda, you were going to talk.
Yeah.
Yes, so we do do, we do have text messaging in place for our staff members. And we have text messaging in place for our inclement weather lists. When it comes to parents, there are CAN spam rules in place when it comes to text messaging. And so implementing the te, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me? I get busted at meetings a lot, okay.
Something about my voice just doesn't carry well through the mask. So we have text messaging in place for our staff members. We have text messaging in place for those who sign up for inclement weather alerts. We have not yet turned on text messaging for students. It is on our to-do list for this year, Dr., or Mr. Wickham and I have it on our list for this year. CAN spam regulations prevent me from just turning it on? There's a great plan that has to happen with synchronizing the data and making sure we've got the right number and parents have opted in in the right way. It, it pushes out a big district-wide message that parents have to know what to do with, or they're going to say no, and opt out of anything that we send to them. And so there are just sort of all of these components at play. There's also an app that lets parents decide, I want to get attendance calls at this number, but I want to get notifications about COVID only via text and at this number. And so there's a huge education piece to that as well, getting our families on board. Somebody like you, Mr. Chabak, you're going to adopt an app like that so quickly, right? And you're going to be able to work with it and, and really easily manipulate it. But we have a whole host of families who wouldn't be as easy with that app, and we have to sort of do it carefully. And the standards for that change, so the information I'm giving you now is based on two years ago when we last looked at it. And so right now, we're getting all the white papers, all of the implementation information, so that we can look at how that sync would happen for, in general, for families and the types of communication that would need to happen before we flipped the switch.
So right now, we only have phone call to families.
Mm-hmm.
We only have phone call and email, correct?
As direct push communication. We of course also have our dashboard that's available.
Right, direct push, right.
Yes.
But do, do they choose, do, do the families choose whether they want a phone call or an email? Or do we choose which one, how it comes out?
The sender chooses. So if the message is coming from me, I choose. If the message is coming from a school, the school chooses.
I see, okay.
Okay, so, um, the, the suggestion on the table is, um.
I guess now we have to decide, we want email or phone call if we want to do weekly updates to the, to the, to the schools, all right?
Yeah, I mean, we could, because some are signed up for one or not the other, is that correct?
Sorry.
Remember, our families aren't signed up. This is information that syncs with Power School.
In Power School, it's not a signup thing.
They can block us, which is what's happening. Our block rate is increasingly high and gets higher.
It's the, on the, on the phone portion?
Yes, they're blocking us. Um, and they're also blocking us from their emails. And so they're saying, I don't want to get your messages anymore. Sometimes it's an accident, but when we look at the numbers and how much it increased, we're just going to say it's the Mr. Garretson effect, right? That's what we do.
So, so my suggestion was to use a threshold for the weekly emails. I don't know, I, I know, Gune, and you seem to like that idea, but I, I, what are, what are the rest of you all thinking?
I would say email only because if we're having this much of an issue with the phone, at least if we send it by email and there is a call that is missed, we have something in writing and that person can always go back to an email. And, or the school can say, we sent that email out, and they can retrieve it. Um, and I think the weekly thing, uh, one email a week to update and give the information that they're asking for. I, I don't see any problem with that.
And still keep.
But I do like the idea of the threshold.
Yeah, because I mean.
And I, I think that would have to be based on a percentage of student, of cases per student body. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't use that same threshold in every school.
Correct.
And I agree with that because Dr. Bissell did such a remarkable job. I don't know if she's still here, but thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, I've never been so informed in my life. And I know that everyone watching and the parents and all of us really do appreciate all of her information. Um, but I think what she said about that particular part of it is vital, uh, in making sure that no one gets confused and there is no miscommunication with the communication part.
Right, right, right. So do a majority of us, are we good with that, other than deciding on the threshold? Yes, no?
So why aren't we doing a roll call since we do that with every other vote we do?
Well, we usually only do roll calls with policies.
No, we do roll calls.
We do them with other things, yes. But I just wanted to get people's feedback before we have a motion, because we don't even have a motion yet. I just wanted to see, are we thinking on the same page?
Could you define threshold? I mean, I know what the word threshold means, but. But what are you, how are you using it in this context?
Here's what, here's what I'm thinking, especially looking at the, um, the case rates, that some of the, um, some of the, the graphs that, that Dr. Bissell put up there. And just our own, you can look at our own graphs, right? And see when, when we're in a situation where parents are like, give me every ounce of information you possibly can. And even if you look at last year, that was in September, Octo, you know, we got to, you know, we got to October, November, things settled down. That's probably when people started tuning out some of the calls and things. Then we got to December, January, things kind of soared again, people got interested again. So to me, I think there's a, you know, we, I don't know, the, the information's available on the dashboard. If we send out these things weekly by a threshold, meaning that if you're above a certain percentage, let's say you have a, a school of a thousand, uh, students and, uh, you know, one, one percent would be ten cases, right? So I'm not saying that one percent should be the threshold necessarily.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Like one, one per hundred, maybe.
But if, if one percent or even, you know, whatever we decide, if one percent is the threshold, and so the weekly goes out, that there's at least ten cases, you know, I don't know if that's, you know, for, for the week, um, then, then we hit that threshold and the email goes out to, to parents in that school.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right, I do.
I think one, one for a hundred.
It makes sense, but I don't agree with it.
Well, the problem is.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but.
Hopefully, if we get back to a point, let, let's say you're at a point again in, you know, in a couple of months, like Dr. Bissell's saying, where we're down to no cases in a lot of schools even, or just one case a week or something like that, do we really need to be sending a communication?
No.
No, but we're not talking about, we're not talking about later on, we're talking about now, aren't we?
But you've got to remember, Dr. Bissell herself.
You've got a whole lot of people that don't want to know.
Even said that we're looking at the graphs and nobody, it's not being looked at correctly because people don't know what they're looking at and they don't realize what they're looking at and what the numbers mean. She sat right here and said that. So people can look at those graphs, one, one parent can look at it thinking, and another one can look at it thinking, oh, well, that's not bad. And that, that can be miscommunicated in that way, like she was just up here saying.
Sure, no, I, I wasn't saying that we would send out the graphs, I was just saying that we would send out.
No, she was just giving that as an example.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I was.
Do we want to put a motion on the table at this point?
Well, let's talk about the threshold too. If, you know, and I like what Mark talked about, and he was, he threw an example out, but one for hundred. So a, a school like Bellevue, if you had more than three in a week, or a school like Blacksburg High School, you have more than twelve in a week, it would be considered high based on the student population.
Yeah, that seems very minim, that seems very excessive, in my opinion. The one percent per hundred.
I'm, I'm totally lost here. I, I don't under, I guess I just don't understand what it is we're trying to achieve. We're asking for more transparency and more communication, and we're saying, okay, we'll send out an email once a week. So you don't even know, it could have happened a week ago and you're finding out about it. We'll send you once a week, but we're not going to send it unless there is this many cases, so we just got to make sure, so hopefully, you're all counting the cases and we're not missing it. I mean, to be honest, I don't know why we just can't go back to what we were doing. And then if people don't want to lis, answer the phone, and they don't want to listen, then they can block the phone call. They can block the email. But I think, I, I, I don't, that's what I hear people asking for. I don't hear them asking for these, these weekly, I, to be honest, that, that sounds like just a waste of time. I, I just don't see how that's going to be beneficial to anyone, um, and it's extra work for people.
I think Dr. Bissell made it pretty clear that, um, anything above our dashboard is extra work and doesn't benefit anyone. I think she made that pretty clear in her statistics that she gave us and, and what that information means.
But she's not the parent. Her kids aren't in the school and she's not having a deal. I mean, I, I appreciate that, and it's matter of fact, I'd like to talk about one of the other things, Dr., when we get done with this, what Dr. Bissell talked about. Um, because I think she, she had a lot of very good points this evening. Um, but I, on this one, I'm, and I heard what she said, but I, what I hear parents asking for is more information. And I'm not sure why we can't just provide them with what they're asking for.
I think that's, we're, we're trying to strike a balance, though, I think.
A balance, but why are we trying to strike a balance?
Okay, because here's why, because, because if we inundate people with, with, with emails and information that they don't, that's just too much for them, they will block us, which means that they will not just block those messages, they will block all messages. And they will then, then they will not receive important messages that they should be getting. It's, 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 it's a balance between being informative and spamming people, right? And, and so that's all we're trying to do, is just find out where is that, where is that balance between, you know, because we, we went from, you know, we really, again, this summer, we were expecting that there were going to be very few cases at all anyway. And we're obviously in a different situation now, and so we're, we're trying to dial it back to being a little more informative, right? So.
And, and we really can't say all the parents wants this way or that way.
That's right.
Because we don't know all the parents wants.
We've not heard from the silent majority.
We heard, I heard a lot of from, you know, Margaret Biggs' community, obviously, past a couple of days. But I don't know what Eastman Committee or Auburn Committee wants to, they want to, every day, they're, they're, you know, be cold, maybe not. I have, I have, so we have to consider, you know, everyone.
I've heard from my community that they're getting what they feel they need.
Yeah.
And I've heard that from several others.
So we have to be considerate of that too when we make a board, you know, decision. That's why I think the weekly, maybe it will be some kind of a, a balance and, um, or just we have to stick what we have and have, you know, make sure everybody looks at the dashboard the way that it is supposed to, and maybe we can just divide the, you know, dashboard numbers, students and staff, instead of calling anybody, I mean, that's the other option.
So does anyone want to make a motion so that we have a starting point, a jumping point here?
I mean.
Well, I'll make a motion that we report as cases are, uh, shown to be positive, that we report quarantine numbers, that we separate staff and students, and that we do that until our levels go down to practically nothing.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can I, any discussion?
I, I, I agree with that. I'm hoping that we can have a little bit more discussion and, and maybe amend, uh, the motion to something that, that we can pass. But I think, I, I think the idea of a threshold is something that if we put it in place, because you said until it's almost nothing, so we, we can come up with what that threshold is. And that way, th, this policy would kick in, would probably kick in now. And it would also kick in in the future if number, you know, if we had another surge in the spring or something like that, without us having to get involved, so. Because I, I think the motion, as it's on the table, next to nothing, I mean, I, I think we have to come up with something a little more specific than that.
Well, we at least have to go ahead and vote on the motion as it is.
Was this a daily?
Can I have a?
May I, can I ask a question? Was that a, something that, was this a daily notification?
Whenever there's a case, a positive case.
So every day, okay.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Bond?
No.
Mr. Chabak?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Motion fails.
So I think, I think it would be nice to have some discussion, it'd be nice if we can get, have some discussion to get a motion that, that has a chance, I think, of.
Is there a way, Brenda, to have, um, parents opt in for messaging or phone calls? Where instead of sending it out to everybody where they request, I would like to get this phone call, I'd get, like to get this email? And that way, we're not sending it to people who don't want it?
We certainly have that capability, we use it with our, um, snow list.
With what, I'm sorry?
The snow list. So we call all parents and all staff members, that's relatively. So, we call all parents and all staff members, that's relatively new, we started that in the last 18 months, where all staff members and all parents get that call automatically because it changes their schedule. But then we also call, that snow list requires a little bit of setup, some work, I will say, that Mr. Wickham's never done before, and so I feel like we have to be transparent about that. That snow list has been in place since before I got here 11 years ago. But I think there are methods and ways that we can sync that up, at least for, for email, we could do it really easy. There's some free companies that we could use, but when it comes to using our, our paid service, some methods we'd have to look at.
Brad, I'd like to make a couple of points.
Yeah, ma'am, sure.
Yes, please.
First of all, since the good doctor made reference to it, on a lighter night, go hokies. And, and if, you know, I, I know I wasn't asked, but I, I have a big mouth and I'll editorialize a little bit. As a lawyer, I get very concerned if we're legislating or developing policy or practices based on what we read on Facebook. I, a day in my life doesn't go by where I, there's legal exposure for a school division because someone has done something entirely indefensible on Facebook. So I don't find that to be a terribly credible source, but I know my opinion wasn't asked. Two things that I want to point out on the scope of what we can release. Number one, it's my understanding, and I thought I might get caught up when Dr. Bissell was still here, if an individual student, we believe, or the Department of Health believes that an individual student has been exposed, they will be notified by the very fact that they're being interviewed about it. So the rest, to me, is speculation, which is not fact, which should not be reported. I did pull up, because I wasn't sure, I hadn't checked since last time I gave you all the advice about this, which was a year ago, there was March 2020 guidance from the FERPA office in Washington. It has been once updated, so that I don't get accused of misquoting or paraphrasing. Allow me just to read to you three questions and their answers to those about what you may release. I don't even need my old man glasses. May a school disclose the number of students who have COVID-19, may a school, not a school division, may a school disclose the number of students who have COVID-19 to parents and students in the school community without prior written consent? You know, the federal FERPA law requires before you may disclose any information about a student, that you have to have that parent's consent. There are exceptions. This says, again, the question, may a school disclose the number of students? Yes, provided that the information the school shares with parents and students does not allow for any individual student to be identified. If a school division discloses info, excuse me, if a school discloses information about students in a non-identifiable form, then prior written consent from the parent is not needed under FERPA. When determining what information may be shared without consent, the school must take into account other reasonably available information that could potentially enable identifiable information to become identifiable. For example, and this is, again, I'm just reading, a school generally could release the fact that five students are absent due to COVID-19 without disclosing the students' identities. This would be allowed under FERPA, as long as there are a sufficient number of other students who attend the school and other students at the school are absent for other reasons. However, we caution schools to ensure that in releasing such facts, they do so in a way that does not reveal information that alone, or in combination with other information, would allow a person in the school community to identify the students who are absent due to COVID. So back to your circumstances about a kid in a class, if that's the only kid that's absent that day, and you've released that third grade Mrs. Jones' class had one kid out because of COVID, you've disclosed who that kid is and you violated federal law.
That's right.
Understand my point?
Yeah.
May I read, may I read a couple of other, there are just two other questions and answers that I think might be helpful. May a school identify a particular student who has COVID-19 to parents and students in the school community without prior written consent? In most cases, it will be sufficient for a school to report the fact that an individual in the school has COVID-19, rather than identifying the specific student who is infected. However, there may be situations during a health or safety emergency, I'm gonna pause for a second there, there are health and safety emergency exceptions to the general FERPA rules. So for instance, if you had a school that was on fire, and you needed to rescue certain kids and they were having medical issues, in those instances, there's a health and safety emergency, you may disclose things about a student without mom and dad's consent. So I was reading, however, there may be situations during a health or safety emergency in which a school may determine that it is appropriate to disclose identifiable, identifiable information to parents or students about a student with COVID-19, if knowledge of such information is necessary to protect their health. For example, if a student with COVID-19 is an athlete and has been in close contact with other students on a sports team, or students who have higher health risks, school officials may determine that these other students or the parents need to know the identity of the infected student in order to take protective measures. And then there are other FERPA requirements for documenting that health and safety emergency. Goes on to say, therefore, in these limited situations, school officials may determine that it is appropriate to disclose such information to parents or students if the disclosure is necessary to allow parents and students to take appropriate precautions. School officials should make this determination on a case-by-case basis, taking into account the totality of the circumstances, including the risks presented to the health of students or other individuals, and the need for such individuals to have the information in order to take appropriate actions. School officials may want to consult with public health officials when making this determination, which again, I think circles back to the contact tracing that you likely would have been doing in those circumstances, anyway. One more question answered, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. And this probably gets to the motion that's pending now. May a school division, or school, excuse me, disclose the number of students who have COVID-19 in order to provide general health data to the public, including the media, without prior written consent? Yes, with the same proviso, provided that the information the school shares does not allow for any individual student to be identified. Similar to sharing information with the school community, if a school discloses information about students in a non-identifiable form, then consent is not needed under FERPA, as discussed above. When a school determines what information may be shared without prior written consent, the school must take into account other reasonably available information that might allow non-identifiable information to become identifiable. Sorry, your eyes are probably completely glazed over now, but that's the guidance from the office that will be enforcing individual student rights.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Yeah, so let's just get this straight, because everybody cuts into jump on it. At no time have I, have myself, or I heard from any other board member, that we would be putting out information about a child in a specific class.
Right.
Or, or doing, or, you know, the ridiculous thing of putting a child's name out there. But every time that comes up, everybody's like, yeah, no, no, we're not gonna do that. Well, yeah, nobody says we're gonna do that, and nobody has even, you know, even thought about doing that, so we need to stop that, really.
Yeah, I, I, we were talking, last year, what we did last year is we said, there was a student in a school had a case, like, that's what we did last year, correct? So, my, like, that's, I think, what we're talking about, is letting people know that there's a student, there's, we're, we're not doing, we have it on the dashboard to some degree, but it's not specific staff or students, and what we're saying is just getting that information out to people on a regular basis, as opposed to having them have to go to the dashboard to try to figure it out. And also, one thing I want to make, one comment to Brad, you, you made an assumption, that, because you said that if a student, we don't need to notify anybody because there's going to be contact tracing done. You're making an assumption that contact tracing's being done. I'm hearing from a lot of parents that that's not happening. So, that's, that's, that's an assumption, yes, yeah, if contact tracing was done all the time, you're right, but it's not. And I, there's probably a parent sitting really close to you right now who could probably tell you that.
So, oh, go ahead, Jamie, sorry.
I've got a question. What, I'm just curious, what difference would it make whether it's a staff or a student? It's a case, it's a positive case. Why do we have to pinpoint? Why do we have to make that out, put it out there? If, if we're not concerned about getting in out there who it might be or directing, what, what's it matter? If we're going to do just a, okay, this school has this many cases, and do that update once a week, I might, could support that, but it doesn't matter if it's a staff member, it doesn't matter if it's a teacher, it doesn't matter if it's a student, it's a case. You can get COVID, that someone has it, it doesn't matter the age, am I correct? So, why do we have to pinpoint that, if it doesn't matter?
It does matter.
Why?
Because there's a level of exposure that, with a staff person versus a child, who's on a bus, who's around many other students, that a staff may not have that same level of exposure, and are more likely to probably have their mask on correctly versus a child, especially younger children. So, yeah, it does matter who is the person who is positive, because of the level of contact that they may have.
But I'm, I'm speaking in a sense of transparency that we continuously get told that we're not doing, that's the, but, and I disagree with that. But with, with that being, it's more about knowing the case, not what you're talking about. I understand what you're saying and how someone gets it, and how someone might be around a person a little bit more, but that comes into the questioning of finding out who could be exposed that's around that person. Same as if a student's on a team, if the student's participating in a club or an activity. But, I guess where I'm coming from is, what does that matter to the public?
For those very reasons, Jamie, if there's a possibility of more exposure because a child is in, having more activity with sports and all those kinds of things you just talked about, versus a staff person who doesn't necessarily have those levels of possible exposure, then the ca, the chances of it being transmitted at a higher level or a lower level depends on who may have that case.
But that's going to be individual to the child, what if the child gets picked up by its parents, and it's on no athletic team, I mean...
And we've got teachers that coach.
I, I think it's just an issue, I think it's just an issue of transparency, too. I mean, I, I could come up with other reasons why the public might want to know that number, but i, if we're not disclosing anybody's identity, I don't understand why we wouldn't be fully transparent, but...
If you do set a threshold and you separate it out, one thing we'd have to be careful of, if, is, we'd have to set a threshold for individual student and for a teacher. Because if it is, say it's 10 students and one teacher, if you create an identifiable type of situation.
But would you, if it's over, if it's for one building, over five, four or five school days, would you really be creating that situation?
Well, it depends on the timing of it.
Well, I mean, the chances, the chances that you're only gonna have one teacher ab, one staff absence or one student absence that whole week?
Well, if it's one teacher, for instance.
It's pretty high, actually, it's pretty high.
Yeah, one teacher, it could be possible that would happen in a small building.
Look, I, I think any of these would come with the caveat that we would not do anything illegal, you know, so if we need to explicitly write that in, we can. But I'm gonna say that, I'm gonna try to do one, you asked for a motion, Ms. Graham.
I think that gives us a discussion point.
What's that?
I think it gives us a good discussion point.
So, here's what I'm gonna try to do, I think that any information, and we can still discuss what information we want to release, but any information, specific information we want to release should be on the dashboard, anyway. So what I want to do is, I want to make a motion to, to basically, on the reporting, I think we should separate those two things, or else we'll be here all night. So, let me, let me try to see if I can do this, and I'm happy to amend it if, if anybody has a, a better idea. But I, I'd like to make a motion for us to send a weekly email to a school community with a summary and a link to the weekly dashboard, when weekly cases in that building are above the threshold of 1.5%. So, we can discuss those different things, we can, and, and what we're doing is, we're basically, we're telling them, here's what the cases were this week, here's, you know, we give them the information that's in the dashboard, and we give them a link to the dashboard so they can go get more information. It's just, it's us trying to say, in case you stop paying attention, this is happening. Now, I mean, from things, I, I've, I've heard the number 2% tossed around a lot, 4%, 2% as far as what is considered high, so I think, over 1.5% would definitely capture that. So, but I'm, you know, I'm open to...
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that, yeah.
Could, could we make one, you mentioned it earlier, so could we make a little modification to that?
Sure.
In that, if it looks like we might fall into, I mean, which we shouldn't, if we're not separating out staff and students, we wouldn't fall into that one staff. If we did it overall, like what you're talking about, is that what you're thinking? We wouldn't run into that problem?
Yeah, but I don't think that, I don't think that belongs in this motion.
Okay.
Because all this motion does is, is send out an email.
Okay.
That points people to the dashboard.
Okay.
When cases in that building are above a certain level.
Okay. Any more discussion on that, since you didn't second today?
I can go.
Okay, could I have a roll call?
I, I have a comment. I, I just don't see how that helps parents at all. If you're, Mark, you've got two kids in school, right?
Yeah, I do.
So, would you not want to know if there is a case in Blacksburg High School? If there's cases? And you don't, so you're okay with only finding out if there's 10 or so? You, you, that, as, as long as there's more than 10, but you don't really care if there's less than 10?
I mean, I, look, I threw out this number, I, I...
I don't see why we have to put a threshold on it, I don't understand why there's a threshold.
Because I'm not, okay, the reason there's a threshold on it is because I don't think, I don't want to keep getting week after week after week an email that there's, there were three cases, or there was one case...
Well, that's why I made the, I made the, I asked about, can we have people opt in? If you don't want to, fine, then don't opt in for those emails. But if there are people, there are parents out there who are asking for this information, they want this information.
The, the parents who want the information know to go to the dashboard and get it. What I'm hearing is that there's parents out there that just aren't even aware, and they just, they're expecting these emails to come. And so I'm trying to strike a balance between informing them, maybe when they need to be informed, versus...
Inundating them.
Inundating them and getting them to tune out. Now, you know, Blacksburg High School, what are we talking, 1,000 students? Christiansburg's close to that, too, is it not? I mean, roughly, can we just speak in rough numbers? So we're talking roughly 1,000, you know, 1.5% would be 15 cases in one week, I would definitely want to know at that level. I mean, me personally, I'd probably, I might peg that number lower, you know? But this is part, I, I'm making the motion, I, I, I'm happy to hear where you guys think that, that threshold should be. And if we can get four votes for a certain threshold, then that's, I guess, where it needs to be.
Any further discussion on this?
I'd almost like to ask Brad to come back up and give us his thoughts on what he thinks we, how we should send out the message.
I don't have any particular thought, other than what I just described to you.
Well, I mean, is, is what...
Well, I mean, in response to some of the comments that were...
What we're asking...
In response to some of the comments made to my previous comments.
Right.
I did hear this board, two hours ago, or an hour and a half ago, talk about knowing specific children's names, because I read about it on Facebook, that's why I made the editorial comment, I mean. So I think we have to be cautious about the potential to identify an individual student. Other than that, I read to you the, what the FERPA office said, if you're sending out regular data on the number of children in a building, that's perfectly permissible, so long as, when you evaluate all of the data, I can't look at that, you know, list of three and know it's Mr. Chabaka's son or daughter, I don't know what you have, I apologize. You, you get my point?
Yeah. Do you see a...
So, so someone's got to be examining those messages well enough to know that the school division can't be liable for having in, unintentionally identified a child.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, I, I'd like to know what y'all's input is on, on where you would set that threshold. I mean, nobody's thrown out a number but me, I mean, are you with that number?
I'm fine with your threshold.
Yeah, I can support that. I can support anything lower, but I could support that.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
I'm not sure what we're voting on, can we read the, is it a motion?
Could you read the motion again, please?
Of course. The motion is to send a weekly email to a school community with a summary and link The motion is to send a weekly email to a school community with a summary and link to the dashboard when weekly cases in that building are above the threshold of 1.5%.
No.
Ms. Cass?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Motion clears.
Thank you. Okay.
So, now to, I guess, transition to the info, the type of information that we're giving. I mean, there's been some talk about quarantine cases. I know that there's other districts that do that. I, I, I hear, I heard Dr. Bissel well on what she was saying, you know, being the, you know, basically, what are you going to do with this information? How is it going to be used in a positive way? If it can't be, then maybe you shouldn't give it out. And, and again, I come, I come back to the issue of transparency. I think for what we're doing, I think it's better to be transparent. If we have that information and, you know, it's not, you know, we're not identifying anybody or something, I would definitely be support, in, in support of giving that information out. If we don't, another idea that I thought about is, you know, we probably have an idea of what our absentee rate is on average before COVID and we could certainly report what the absentee rate in the buildings are. That's something, honestly, as a board member, when we talk about delivering instruction, curriculum to students who aren't there, it kind of would be interesting to know, how mu, how much are we doing that, you know? Are we doing, you know, are 10% of the kids absent? You know, I don't even know what an average is. Is it like 3% or 4%, 5%?
Six or seven percent.
Six or seven percent today? Is, that's not now, that's, that's pre-COVID?
Yes.
Let, let's call, I mean, I, I like to use a round number, so let's say it's 5%, right? If, if the average is 5% generally and we're seeing a 20% absentee rate, you know, right now, let's say, then that gives me an idea, at least roughly, how many more people. Now, do I, I may not care, as a school board member, I don't know that I care. Is, is it a lab-tested positive case or are they quarantining for real or for not? All I know is that COVID is causing an extra 15% of our student population in this building or across the division to be absent. And then that helps us, you know, when we're making decisions about things. Now, if that number goes back down to, you know, 7% and now the difference is only 2%, well, that tells us something too, right? So, anyway, I just wanted to open up that conversation.
Dr. Meyer, aren't we going to have to confirm what the absence is? Students are out all the time for absences. So, if we're going to do this by what Mr. Travaca is talking about, you're going to have to have somebody sit there and make sure that the absence is due to a COVID-related illness. Am I not correct?
I, I don't think so. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying.
All right, hold on, hold on. Hold on, before we get into more in-depth stuff here, I need to know that a majority of the board wants to do further communication or changes to the dashboard. That, that's the next question. We, we made this decision that we, the majority agreed on. Now, we need to know, do we need to go, does the majority of the board want to go any further with more communication?
I don't, I'm happy with what we've changed. I think it's a step in the right direction and I think we need to start there.
I'd like to see us report something on either absences or quarantines, just because the public's been asking for it.
Gunnan?
I think I'm fine with, with this, you know, if, if the majority wants to divide between students and staff, I think that's the only thing I would be okay for. I don't think I want to know anything more than that. Definitely not the quarantines.
I'm fine the way it is and I think, I'm going to take what Dr. Bissel said to heart and I think what she made was, had a lot of sense. And I think if people want to know more, they'll look for it and find it and are certainly free to call and ask and, and reach out to the school in any other way that they would deem that they need necessary.
Okay, Penny?
Well, first of all, the schools aren't going to tell anything if you call and ask, how many cases do you got today?
I don't mean ask that. I mean, if, what, what they can legally ask if they want more transparency because we can't put that out anyway.
So, no, without the quarantine numbers and I'm not going to agree to that.
Okay, Sue?
I'm not quite sure what the question is.
Let me restate it. I, I just want to see if people want to add more communication, if the majority of the board wants to add more communication or, or make any changes to the dashboard. So, it's a yes or no question? Answer, I mean.
I, I really can't, I, I don't have an answer for you. Sorry, I don't, I, 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 now we're talking about the dashboard, we don't even want to communicate to people what's going on yet now. So, what is it we're planning on doing to the dashboard? I, I feel like we're just making these decisions that, and getting into these details that I, I'm not even sure where we're headed with all of this.
Okay.
What is it you want to do to the dashboard?
Well, I, I think, we, we haven't determined that. The question is.
But how can you ask me to say yes or no when there's, we haven't determined it, but say yes or no, please?
She just asked you if you just wanted to add a little bit more information.
I don't know because we haven't talked about what information we would add.
Well, it's a, it's a yes or no to where do we have a discussion to, to find out if we want to? Because we, as a board, agreed if it's not enough people that are interested in something, it does and we don't continue on the conversation. That's all she's asking you, is if you want to continue the conversation or if you're happy with this motion that passed on the extra information that will be going out.
So, Gunnan said that she would support adding, splitting up the, adding the staff versus students and that that would be all. I, I would support that as well. I would also support adding information about either absences and/or quarantines.
I would go along with that.
And Penny was a no, so.
Okay, so, at this point, we either need a motion for what you guys want to do or a motion for what Gunnan wants to do.
Gunnan, why don't you go ahead and motion because I don't think there's a support for.
On like a motion that we add to the dashboard information, the, um, I don't know how we describe the dip, I guess, divide, you know, the ratio of staff and students? I don't know, that's a good word, I think.
Okay.
You guys fix it. It's, it's when it's going weekly. It's basically, you know.
Well, the dashboard gets updated, is it daily?
Daily.
Oh, that's.
Do you want your change to the dashboard or do you want your change in the information here?
I think it should be to the dashboard, we should leave this alone and just let it point to the dashboard.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm confused now, but.
We can update a graph on the dashboard as often as the board wants to see it updated. The two graphs we have right now are updated daily. I think a student-staff breakdown by week is very smart because it often would be higher than one.
Yeah.
When you, we already do a daily count.
Yes.
We already show that count by school. So, not only can you see, we had 30 positive cases today, you can see exactly how many cases were in each school over the course of a week. I think you're much safer, I don't mean to speak for Brad, I'm probably speaking out of turn, Mr. King, I apologize.
I think that's what I meant.
So, is, is that helpful? I didn't want you to feel hammered into it daily.
No, no.
We're, we can do daily, but we can make a graph be whatever you want it to be. We're here to do what you want to do.
I think weekly is more sensible than we won't take any risk.
So, basically, what's being said is you take the current weekly and when we send this out at the end of the week, we then break it down between staff and students.
On the dashboard only, as a weekly.
Just with the weekly report because it's going to most likely have that higher number where it would not be identifying individuals.
Identifiable, right.
If you do it on a daily basis, it could be really easy to identify individuals.
Okay, do you want to modify your motion?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
What? There was a second.
I'll second. Oh, I'm, I, I'll second if nobody else says anything.
We get a little.
Oh, it's defaulted. Okay, can we restate the motion with Gunnan's change? The motion is to add the student-staff breakdown to the dashboard as a weekly update.
Okay, and we have a, are you okay with the modified motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, Mr. Travaca, okay with the modified motion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bond?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to do discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay?
Roll call, please. Ms. Bond?
No.
Mr. Travaca?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so what is the motion?
The motion is to add the student-staff breakdown to the dashboard as a weekly update.
No.
Ms. Cass?
I'm going to abstain because I just don't even understand half this conversation. So, I'm going to just abstain.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Barton?
No.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. So, I think we've negated all, I mean, we've surpassed all the communication changes at this point?
I think so. Um, I would, can I add one thing or just bring up one? So, another thing that came up, has come up this week or previous weeks and it came up tonight too, I think, in, in one of the public speakers and that's a published process for, you know, we're adding to our COVID page, like the, the, um, the link that we have there to, to the health department. It's a quarantine guidance from the New River Health District. I think that's been a really informative piece of information. But I've also heard from a lot of parents that are asking for more information on what to do when it's, either when it's, when it's not COVID or when it's suspected not to be COVID. How do, you know, how does my kid get back to school if it's not a COVID exposure?
Jason, I think we had this email from a, a constituent and could you talk about how you handled that, if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am, we have that information. I do think I've shared it at least with, maybe not all, but some of the board members. Forgive me if I missed you. Our nurses are all aware of that and we, we also, if we needed to put it in a way that it could be displayed on the main COVID page, I, I think we can do that quite easily if that's the will of the board.
Because we also have the, the workflow, the flow chart.
Right, that's after an exposure. Yes, ma'am, and that has been, that has been extremely useful.
Yeah, and that is already on our website.
Correct, correct. And that's what I'm saying, it's helpful to have that on the website.
Right.
Because anytime there's an exposure, a parent can just go there and look at that flow chart and figure out what they need to do. What's missing is some of the other, if there isn't an exposure, if there's just symptoms.
Sniffles, yeah, what do we do with sniffles?
Yeah, what do I do with this? Oh, it went away, now I think it's a cold or it's an allergy or whatever. What do you do? And that's, and, and I've heard that from multiple parents, you know?
We'll, we'll put it together.
Okay.
Vet it past the health department and we should be able to get that up on the dashboard, hopefully by the end of the week, if that's the will of the board.
Is that, is that okay with the board to have more information like that to help parents diagnose? Now, I don't want to say diagnose, but to know what to do.
Published guidance.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is every, is everybody good with that? I don't want Jason to do work if we're not in agreement.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I see a majority shaking their head. Okay. All right, are we okay to move on? All right.
What are we going to move on to?
The agenda?
Hmm?
The agenda?
Well, I, there's actually something else regarding COVID I'd like to, to bring up. And it was something that was discussed, Dr. Bissel brought up when she, we were talking and that's about mandated vaccines for staff.
Okay, so you, you can bring that up in new business? That's the best place for that. And we're going to be there in just a few minutes.
Gotcha.
All right, board member reports. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up?
I just quickly report that I attended Governor's School Board meeting end of August and they are in full-fledged in-person, 117 kids and so far, everybody is following the mask mandate 110% and they are doing well. So far, there's no face and everybody's happy. And one thing that's been talked is recognizing Governor's School students' accomplishments on, on local boards. That was a suggestion made at, at the meeting. And also, the Pilavsky Building needs a roof repair. I think that was on the agenda back in the days before COVID and Dr. Sears brought it back and, of course, back in the days, the number for the roof repair changed quite a bit, so they're going to bring a, you know, new coach about it. And, and I think it's going to come down to the participating school districts so, in terms of how we can help to pitch in on that roof repair. So, just a FII, you may hear, you may hear that. And that's, that's pretty much it, I think.
Okay, anybody else?
I do, and I'll make it quick, I know we're pushing time. Um, I just want to give a shout out to Christiansburg for their win at the last seven seconds of the game against Abington. Uh, that was amazing, yay. And, and I gotta have to just give kudos to, I've been picking up my granddaughter on Tuesday, so my daughter-in-law can do some subbing. And she is a car rider at Auburn Elementary and they do a phenomenal job with all of these parental pickups and I'm sure every school with every teacher out there, they're running and trying to peg in who's there and who to get ready next and, and it, even though it's a madhouse, it's smoother than I can imagine if I ever tried to do anything like that. So, I've got to give kudos to those teachers out there that are manning that and doing it because it is just a zoo. Um, and then also, you know, I've heard during our heat wave we had a couple of weeks ago, just how hard it was. I, I understand all the situations and I get the masks, but bus drivers. Some of these buses are 106, 115 degrees that don't have air conditioning in them. You know, and, and it's easy to wear a mask when you're in the buildings with air conditions, but when you're on those hot buses, being forced to wear a mask without air conditions, I feel for them and I just want them to hear that I hear, I feel for them because I do. And the ladies in the cafeterias, you know, I had to work today and on my day off and just there again, finding people and getting them there and it's tough everywhere. And I decided in between haircuts, I was going to clean the stove and, and put it on the, it heated up that kitchen to, it was crazy. I can't imagine all day long, every day with masks on and I, I know that's where we are and that's fine, but I want them to know too that I'm thinking about them and I'm thinking about those bus drivers and those students on those hot days, so.
Right, Mr. Travaca? We have to extend in four minutes, just giving you a heads up.
Okay, hopefully I won't take that long. Um, I attended the, um, the Dialogue on Race on the 28th and, um, I heard some really good testimonials from some of our own students, but one, the one that I wrote down and came away with actually came from our, from one of our equity leads who basically said that the students are our accountability. And I think that sums it up nice. We can congratulate ourselves, but if the students don't feel the effects of what we're doing, then we're coming up short. And that really kind of hit home to me and, you know, the request from, from the students and from, from, from this equity lead was, you know, that, that the time for talking was done and we need to do more. And, uh, you know, and I know that we are doing a lot, but it got me thinking about, um, you know, Ms. Franklin has brought up some of this stuff in the past. I know we've done some training, but, um, you know, I certainly have a desire to see us, to, to see how, and I, I, I think this might be something that is in the, in the strategic plan, but to, to see what we come up with that we are going to teach the students, all the students, because everybody needs to hear and it's, that's part of the education and, you know, um, and it's, you know, I'm disappointed that, you know, at the national level, this is kind of becoming a hot topic that, you know, I feel like is, is, is a way to almost preempt some of the things that we ought to be teaching. But, you know, I'm not going to be cowed by that and I look forward to seeing what, what our community's going to do on that and I would encourage us to, to move, uh, to move a little more quickly on that because that's what the students are asking for and, and I think it is needed, so.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a, um, hold on a second, would anyone like to make a motion to extend?
I make a motion, we extend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, next.
Okay, sorry, I've just got a few things here that I'd like to, that I'd like to point out. With, uh, the talk about the employment this evening, I would like to make a point to say that we had a very successful job fair with 15 new applicants. Our HR team continues to work to fill, to fill positions and we are getting positions filled. So, I would like to put that out there. I know that we're having issues with them due to many different things that are out of our control, but our HR team is doing a fantastic job and we are getting people in here. So, I did want to make a point to mention that. I did want to say, it was National Payroll Week. I did wanna say, um, it was National Payroll Week. I don't think our payroll staff probably ever gets thanked, uh, very much. But they've got over 2,000 employees every month to have to make sure everything's right on that paycheck. And so, a big thank you out to them for all they do. Another congratulations to our Support Staff Employee of the Year, um, Brian Light. He's from Harding Avenue. He's the Senior Custodian. So, he was our Employee of the Month. I wanted to put spotlight on him. Thank you, Mr. Light, for all you do. Um, I did also want to say, I've been really impressed at how our community continues to support our schools. Um, I've, I've been involved and talked with a few PTAs. They're providing breakfast. Um, they're putting up positive school signs in the, in, in the schools. When I've been to the schools, I've seen all these positive signs put up and around. Um, we've had food trucks, ice cream trucks, stuff show up. So, uh, just very encouraging that our community is, is being so positive with our schools. And I think our community is stronger because of how our schools are. So, just wanted to throw that out there. And one last note on the MCPS newsletter, mailed to every home, whether you had a child or not, very important information about the schools. I got nothing but extremely positive feedback on that. And these are from people who don't have any kids in the school, but just so they know what's going on in the community and, and what, you know, some information that they would never get just because they don't have a child in the school code. So, just wanted to throw that out there, that some very positive feedback from community members, even without, uh, children in our school system. So, just wanted to add that also.
Awesome.
Um, I'd like to say something.
Yeah.
Um, so, one of the things I did this week, in the last week, is I visited, um, our two middle schools. Uh, so, or two middle, I visited two middle schools. I didn't visit the one out in Shawasaw. But I went to CMS and BMS. And in both of the visits, I had the opportunity to talk to, um, guidance counselors. And our guidance counselors are really under a lot of, a lot of pressure right now because of, uh, a lot of things that are going on. And in particular, what they're very concerned about, and I know we did, we voted not to put this on our agenda this evening, um, is the transgender policy and how it's being enforced in the schools. And there's some great concern. I think our, I would love to see, hear more from our guidance counselors about what they're seeing in the schools. Because besides just the transgender policy, there's a lot going on. And they're, you know, our children are under a lot of, uh, pressure and stress. And there's a lot going on with COVID and, and changes. And, um, I think it would, it would be helpful for us to learn more about, you know, what, what our guidance counselors see out in the schools. We can sit here and say, we know what's going on and how our students feel. But they're the people who are on the front line, who are dealing with our students, uh, every day. And it was really a, a very, um, enlightening conversation. The one at CMS was sort of off the cuff while I was walking with, uh, Mr. Hippel. And, and we ran into guidance counselor and just started chatting about everything. And the other was, um, when I was doing a tour around BMS, and we stopped by the guidance office, and two of the counselors were there. Um, but I, I think it's something we, we need to really think about as our students, you know, are going through a lot right now.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, so, I also was at, um, Christiansburg Middle and Kipps Elementary. And what I saw was a lot of people trying to do their jobs the best they could in some of the situations that were going on. And I was truly appreciative and wanted to get out of their way. Um, but had some good conversations with folks. Um, as Sue said, our, our counselors are, um, I think feeling a little, I don't even know if frustrated is the right word, but wanting to, wanting to do everything they can to support our students, but just not sure if they're able to do enough and how they're supposed to do it. So, um, again, I think we need to, you know, give some ears to exactly how our counselors are, are feeling about the jobs that they do every day. Um, and, and how we can best support them because they get a lot of information coming from many different directions. Also, the Dialogue on Race, I wanna thank the school system for stepping up for all the support that they did. Um, every one of our, um, staff that spoke were excellent in explaining, you know, what our equity, equity program is about. And listening to our students, as always, um, shit opens people's eyes, ears, and hearts, minds about what's actually going on in the buildings. I've said over and over again, we don't talk to the students. We don't know what's really going on, no matter what we do. Um, because some of the comments that were made were about stuff that we said wasn't supposed to be happening in the buildings. But it's still happening. And, um, these wonderful students who are stepping up and pointing it out and saying, that's not supposed to be happening in our buildings and it needs to stop. And it was just, um, heartwarming to me to know that we have brave students who are willing to, to do that. And I can't say enough about our, uh, equity leads and the work that they're doing. And, um, they also need to be supported because it is, it, it is and can be very difficult, frustrating work. And to that effect, after hearing from a couple of those leads, our community group actually did a gift card to each one of our leads at the end of last school year to help them understand, we appreciate everything that they're doing because, uh, it takes a lot to step up and have those difficult conversations and try to put things in place to make things better for all our students. So, um, I was impacted, again, by, um, Ryan Wade, the Equity Lead at Blacksburg High, Blacksburg Middle School. And the work that he does with our students and his comments about, you know, if, if the students are saying, shut up and do something. You know, stop talking, do something. And I believe, um, with our, um, strategic plan, we will move things, but it's time to stop talking and having those students be more engaged to make sure we understand exactly what's going on and how it needs to stop immediately. Because the things that are happening in our buildings to some of our students is what we say we won't tolerate, but yet it's still happening, and it's been happening for decades. But again, I thank all of you for all the work that you're doing because it is not easy work. And for taking your Saturday, for everyone who didn't even have to be there, taking your Saturday afternoon in that heat and coming out and supporting the work that's going on.
I'm not sure I understand. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Um, there are no matters of unfinished business. Uh, now we're at new business. Um, are there any matters of new business?
Um, so, I would like to, and I'm not quite sure how to go about doing this, whether it's just something we talk, I mentioned now when we talk about the next meeting. But I would like us to consider a mandatory, um, mandatory vaccination for staff. And, um, I thought it was interesting that Dr. Bissell supported that idea and felt that was, uh, something that we should, we should really be looking at doing. Um, obviously, you know, trying to do it for students and, uh, is, we're not at that point yet. But I think getting all of our staff vaccinated, um, or as many as we can, um, is a step in the, in the right direction. And, um, I would like to see us do that.
Okay, so when I asked board members about adding this item to the, to tonight's agenda, we did not have a majority, um, that were willing to discuss the topic. So, I need to know that there's another, that there's a majority in order to add it to the next meeting agenda. There would have to be a majority to add it.
Okay, so how do we find that out?
I'd, I'd support a discussion.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
We can, we can discuss. Uh, yeah, I, I have my reservation. That's why I didn't support the first time around because we have to be really careful when we mandate something, what the outcome is gonna be when we are having a hard time finding subs and teachers, as is. If they decide to not be able to come, what we can do and what harm that will come to the students in a different way if we cannot, you know, find, uh, enough personnel to teach.
So, you're saying, yes, you wanna add it to an agenda to discuss?
Yeah, we, we can discuss. There's no, no harm to discussion, but.
No? Penny, you already said yes or no?
Yeah, and I agree with Goonin'.
Okay.
We needed to be discussing this.
I'm not ready to discuss that level yet.
Okay, and neither am I, but we do have four that says they are. So, um, can we make sure that that's on the agenda for the next meeting? Okay, thank you. All right, any announcements or information?
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I had another, uh, item of new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, so I know we didn't want to change the agenda for tonight, but I would like to, again, bring up the issue of our transgender policy, um, for a future meeting. And, um, I, I think we're, we, I think we have a problem in the county that we need, we do need to discuss this and possibly offer some clarification to the staff. There were five of us that, um, you know, we, we had a discussion about this last time. There were five of us that voted in favor of passing, um, the policy. But I think there were some, as I understood it anyway, and I think as other staff members I've talked, or board members I've talked to understood it, there, there was, we passed it with the idea of enough flexibility that we were going to, um, fit in into the, uh, framework of the VDOE model guidance. And the way that, you know, after we passed it, I think staff kinda came back and said, oh, you passed this language, therefore, we have to do, we have to treat it this way. And, and I don't, you know, certainly wasn't my intent. It wasn't the intent of several other board members. Um, I think from a legal point of view, it could probably be argued both ways. I think, you know, we, it would be helpful to have this discussion when Brad is there. But, you know, the, the important piece out of the model policy says, if a student is not ready or able to safely share with their family about their gender identity, this should be respected. And the way that we are doing things right now is that if a student even, as far as I can tell, mentions something that they, they're interested in, in, um, being referred to, you know, in a, in a different gender pronoun or something like that, the counselor is immediately notified and the parents must be notified. And I think this goes completely against the spirit of this policy. And I, and I know that we got some, uh, legal advice from, from Brad. And I'm eager to have some back and forth on this because what's happening now is completely different than what I had understood in that meeting when we passed it, so.
So, I'll just go around the room. Um, Sue?
Yes. You mean, to talk about it, to put it on the agenda for the next?
Jamie, do you want to add it to the agenda for next meeting?
Um, I, I, I'm willing to talk about it, but, you know.
Okay, Goonin'?
I, 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 I mean, I'm not shy to talk about it, but my hesitance is that it is, I would like the policy, the way that we try to, you know, train our counselors and expectation has been shared, school is started. You know, I don't wanna confuse anybody any more than they're already confused how to implement what they, in their hand. So, I'd rather have the policy to take its course a little bit and then we will hear what is not working. We can always change an amendment policies, and we do it, you know, all the time. So, I think the improvement should come after we should see what are the, um, setbacks, eh, eh, as is. Because I know when we were discussing this, um, before, you know, it was an end or become an, you know, end situation. But again, it comes to our attention that if we know something and we don't share with the, uh, parents, then we are in trouble as well because if they are under 18, the parent has to know, uh, what is going on. So, it is, it is a fine line, but I really don't want everybody to think that we're gonna change something that they are trying to already, you know, put it in place. Um, not a, not a good feeling, especially on this challenging topic. So, I'd rather have the policy take its course a little bit. And if we hear that, you know, the, it's not working the way that we intended to work, then, you know, then we'll work on an amendment. That's, that's how I feel.
Okay. Penny, wait.
I'm gonna say no because I'm good with the parental right being in place because that's just the right thing to do, and I feel like parents should know.
All right, Penny?
Okay, so, if, if students are immediately having their parents contacted as soon as they ask for any kind of accommodation, and the student is not really aware that this is how things will happen, then, yeah, we could harm a student tomorrow, right? So, I think there needs to be discussions so that we have clarification as to exactly what is happening and how our students are being guided through the process if they want accommodations.
Okay.
And just, can I just, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't?
I, I'm trying to figure out where we're at with adding it to the agenda, and.
I changed mine to no because I do agree with Goonin', and I don't think we need to make it for, we've made a decision, and I'm, I'm sticking with that.
And I'm a no also, but I wanna ask, Dr. Meyer, would it be possible for Annie to provide us a presentation of what, what she learned working with the attorneys? Um, and, and what the guidance is that we are giving to our guidance counselors and how we're supporting those students?
Absolutely. I was gonna suggest that. I think that would be good to see the training that our counselors have gone through. And for her to give, um, the, um, the reasonings behind that have been given by Brad and his team, um, what and why we're doing it, you know.
So, we gotta know to add it to the, to not add it to the agenda for discussion. But I think, based on some of the things I've heard you guys say and what I've been a part of with, with, you know, understanding how all this works, I think you have some wrong information. So, I'd really like for Annie to explain and get the right information so that everyone hears that.
And I agree with you, and I think that could be part of the discussion. And I guess I'm still not clear on, on, on Goonin', where, where you're coming. I, I'm not saying necessarily we have to vote on something. I just wanna be able to have a discussion about it because we have gone back and forth. There was some confusion. So, what is the harm in having a discussion about it, maybe even after Annie gives us a presentation?
I think we can ask her questions.
Okay. All right, great. Because I, in my conversations with guidance counselors, there is confusion. And there is, there is definitely what they're inter, what, what they're hearing versus what they thought it was are not the same. So, there's definitely a disconnect.
Well, I mean, we did training sessions, and in fact, I think you talked to some before we even did the training, which, which.
No, it was after.
Okay, I thought there was one.
Actually, we did training all the way through Thursday, so you'd already visited.
So, um,
No, it was after.
But we did, we did the training with them, and Jason is continuing to work with guidance counselors to continue to provide training and clarification. But, um, the training was pretty clear. Um, I mean, Annie did a, a really good job in, in, in explaining. Um, but if, if folks still don't understand it, uh, we've actually asked Jason to continue and follow up with questions and, and, and give clarity on what's, being, and yes, some may not like the, the answers we're given. Um, but it, we're, we're doing it based on legal, legal guidance.
So, I wasn't sure about your comment to Sue about the training was done through Thursday, so.
And she had visited schools before then?
No, I visited.
There was training going on all week.
They, they were, I know for a fact, they just, it was after the training because they said it was after the training, so.
Well, I think this highlights why, we shouldn't be having the discussion now. This highlights why we need the discussion, so.
Different people at training on different days.
That's great.
Yeah, it's good to, good to get clarification.
Um, right, all right. So, any other new business?
I don't know if this falls under new business, but I would, um, and I don't, I don't remember where we had left things on board members attending, um, other, our own committee meetings. I know we're not supposed to have more than, uh, two board members there, but I, I think there's a meeting of the, um, GAC on Thursday, and I would like to attend that meeting. I don't know if I need to get permission from the board to do that or not, but, um, I think they're, they're holding it by Zoom. And, and when I say attend, I mean, just attended live.
I will check on the bylaws.
I know that I won't be able to participate, and I don't want to participate. I just wanna attend.
I will check on the bylaws and let you know.
Okay.
So.
Does it probably?
It's livestreamed.
Will it, will it be live or will it be recorded?
It's livestreamed.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay, um, any announcements? Okay, any announcements or information? All right, board members, our closed session items are the Personnel Report and Religious Exemptions. Does anyone need to meet in closed session to ask questions regarding either of these items?
I'm good. No.
Okay, so we can proceed with skipping closed session. Do you have a motion to exempt four students from compulsory attendance in Montgomery County Public Schools?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I adjourn the meeting at 11:49.
I dropped county in the morning for our first in-person meeting, superintendent's.